It is six o'clock on March eighteenth. I call this meeting of the Anchorage School District Board to order. We have in the room Member Bellamy, Member Lessons, myself, Member Holloman, Student Representative Pack, and I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your, your name. Madison, Future Student Representative Madison, Member Donnelly, Member Jacobs. Online, we have Member Higgins. And I believe Member Wilson is in transit and may join us at a little bit later in the meeting. This time, I will ask our student representative to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberate and free to the justice forum.
Would also ask our member representative to read the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you. Want to welcome everyone that's here tonight to the meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and the Board. Board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, our school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, talent, and tax dollars. That brings us to item three in the first section, the approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve?
Mr. President, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any, any amendments to the agenda? Member Donnelly.
Nobody else has one. I would move to amend the agenda by adding a recommendation to amend previously adopted ASD Memorandum 106.
Any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to amending the agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, we do need a second. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair, you, can you clarify the motion that we're asking for a second on?
Um, I believe this is the motion that was voted on at the last meeting to assign buildings that will be vacated at the end of the year.
This is some, a motion to rescind, or what are we adding to our agenda?
Um, it would be added as an agenda item to be discussed. It's not, at the moment, we're talking about an amendment to the agenda. Okay. Is there a second? Seeing none, the amendment lacks a second. Is there any other amendment to be made to the agenda? Seeing the hands, is there any objection to adopting the agenda as presented? Seeing the objections, we've adopted the agenda. Um, that brings us to our student representative report. Member Pack.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. So I do want to begin by mentioning why I was not here in our last school board meeting. Um, I was gone for a week in Washington DC for the United States Senate Youth Program. And I was extremely blessed to be afforded the opportunity. Uh, my favorite part of that trip was meeting with Supreme Court Justice Kavanaugh, and inside the Supreme Court Justice, in the side of the Supreme Court, and also verifying that there is indeed a McDonald's inside the Pentagon. And more importantly, I appreciate my time in DC because in such a time of intense political divide, um, this program really reminded me that at the heart of our democracy is and should be a commitment to service, and that everyone who runs our country are people. Um, so that was very impactful to me. Uh, next, I did submit a resolution earlier today, um, to this board, which I did mention last month, and is regarding the elective credits for fine arts, um, presented by Eagle River High School, delegates of the Student Advisory Board. And they talked to me today, and they said that they wanted it submitted before they come to present this resolution themselves in our meeting, in one of our meetings next month. And finally, our, um, next Student Advisory Board meeting will be next Tuesday, um, from ten AM to twelve AM. And some of the items on our agenda include having our, we call it the White Boards of Wisdom. We'll have our Student Advisory Board members who are upperclassmen sit down at tables and give offer words of wisdom, um, and experience to upperclassmen who are interested in, I guess, college applications or just making it through high school, um, and share some experience around. And we'll also have students sharing how they see their schools being impacted by budget cuts and, um, the budget overall in the district, and just want to spark some conversations on that. And finally, finally, we'll be voting in our new Vice President and Secretary in Public Relations Officers. And most importantly, I am thrilled to introduce our new incoming President of the Student Advisory Board, as well as our new Student Representative, Madison. Um, she is a current junior at Eagle River High School, and I believe she'll do a good, if not better, job of representing the students of the Anchorage School District. And so now I want to ta, uh, had my time to her to introduce herself.
Hello, hi. I am so grateful to be here right now, and I am very, very excited to take on this position. And after Josh is being Student Representative on here and SAP President, I am really excited to advocate and help work with this board and learn about the different issues and different information points that are extremely impactful to our district. And again, I do attend Eagle River High School. I'm in eleventh grade, so I will be serving as SAP President and the youth representative on this board during my senior year. And all I can say is that I am very excited and enthusiastic to be able to help with putting more public service to our district and our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. That brings us to our military report, Colonel Hanson. We've set aside some extra time for you if you need it.
Good evening, uh, Mr. President, Superintendent, members of the Board, uh, Team ASD and our, and our folks here in the audience. My name is Colonel Dustin Hanson. I'm the Mission Support Group Commander on Joint Base Elmandorf Richardson. Uh, I do have some slides I'd like to share. Um, but before I, I get there, um, I just want to say, uh, yes, confirm Member Pack. There is a, there is a McDonald's in the, in the Pentagon. Uh, as one who's been, there probably more important, there's a Starbucks, because caffeine is the, is the lifeblood of those of us that have been there. Um, but I'm glad you enjoyed your trip. Pentagon is, is very much like a, it's also a museum as well. And so as you, as you walk the corridors, uh, you will learn a lot about the different, uh, just the different agencies across Department of Defense. And, uh, I, I found it like while I worked there and, and the the growth that goes with working there, uh, there's also a lot of history, um, a wealth of history to learn just walking the halls. So I appreciate the fact that you, uh, went there and you're able to learn. Um, I also want to just say a shout out to the ASD staff. Uh, we, we have on Jay Bear have been working very hard with, uh, acknowledging that Mount Spur, uh, might be something that we have to contend with soon. And so today we had a very good coordinating, uh, coordination meeting between all the mission partners within Jay Bear, uh, as well as our, our ASD team, uh, to ensure that we're working together, um, so that our efforts are complementing how we respond when Mount Spur erupts, whether that is, uh, weeks or months away. Uh, now I would like to, uh, transition to this, what I call Jay Bear fundamentals. My intention here is to, um, I, over the next several months, I'd like to just present layers of, uh, what Jay Bear, what Jay Bear is and what it means to the community. Um, so I'm, I only have four slides, uh, this time around, and I just plan to add a few layers each month to add a little more information, to just help build the knowledge, uh, for community awareness. So I'll begin here with slide one, Jay Bear Fundamentals. Uh, you'll see that I have, uh, I have listed, uh, three folks that are what I would call the Command Team of the Six Seventy-Third Air Base Wing, Colonel Mabbett being the Commander. Colonel Mabbett wears two hats. Uh, she's both the Six Seventy-Third Air Base Wing Commander, and she is also the Installation Commander. We are on a joint base. And so you will see across, uh, several different joint bases around the world, uh, it's, there's always an Installation Commander. That might be an, an Army person. It might be a Navy person. It might be, in this case, it's an Air Force person. Next slide, please. So here I have listed, uh, both some, some faces to some names. Um, I'll get there in a moment. Uh, let me just touch on the mission here. So when, uh, when any person that works on Jay Bear and you talk with them, they're going to be focused on really the mission. And Colonel Mabbett has identified the mission as, as these, these three aspects. Uh, projecting forces, protecting the homeland, and empowering the joint base. And, uh, within that, let's see, and, and within that, we have the vision, uh, where the vision, uh, is complimented by the mission. And this vision is, is to create an Alaska tough warfighter. Um, we have a new Secretary of Defense with this new presidential administration, and there's been very much a focus on this warrior ethos and lethality. And so we've made sure that we complement the vision to ensure that, you know, being in the la, being in Alaska, uh, you have to develop this, what's called like Arctic tough. Uh, I think every Alaskan can appreciate that. And, and we want to make sure that we build warfighters that can prevail in the Arctic or any other, uh, tough condition upon which we may face. Right now, we are deterring our adversaries, at least that's our intent, and we train to eventually, uh, if we have to defeat those adversaries. Finally, our priorities, uh, we try to do A, B, and C. Ready airman, ready base, ready community. Uh, my engagement with the community on behalf of Colonel Mabbett is to, uh, again, is to help, um, ready the community for anything that may happen in the future. At the very bottom, we have Colonel Mabbett on the far left, as I said, Installation Commander. Uh, her deputy right now is a Colonel Van. Uh, however, uh, this summer, we're going to have someone, um, move into that position. That's supposed to be filled by an Army person, a soldier. And so we will have a, a, uh, an O-six Army soldier move into Colonel Van's position to be the Deputy Installation Commander. Uh, we also have our Senior Enlisted Leader, Chief Master Sergeant Sylvester. And we also have, uh, again, a complimentary to the, uh, the Joint Base aspect, Sergeant Major McCommiss as our enlisted Army Senior enlisted leader. And finally, we have our civilian Deputy Director, Mr. Weckhorst. Next slide, please. Okay, this is probably my favorite slide. This is why we love Alaska. Uh, anyone who's in the military, uh, and, and even whether you're outside the military, you can appreciate geoproximity. So, uh, these slides here represent just how strategically located, uh, Anchorage, Alaska is to the rest of the Northern Hemisphere. We can get anywhere pretty quick, um, within the Northern Hemisphere, uh, by going up and over by with and through. And so because, uh, because of this, this is why, especially those of us who are stationed here, can appreciate, uh, the strategic, um, aspect of why Anchorage is so important. As, as we think about our adversaries, or we even think about humanitarian assistance, uh, Anchorage allows us to get to places quick. So I think it was General Hap Arnold back in, uh, well, well before I was born, that said, Alaska is the most strategic place in the world. And this was probably back from in the forties, he said this. Uh, he had, he had that, that vision that, um, that the sight picture to understand how important Alaska was going to be, not just then, but here in the, um, here in the current, as well as the future. Last slide, please. Okay, and this is my final slide, and I would just like to address, uh, a couple's points here. So on the top left, and I'll, I'll hit some numbers, and then I'll describe a little bit about how Jay Bear is, is, um, postured. So, uh, top left, active duty, we have about five thousand four hundred active duty Air Force personnel. Uh, we have on the Army side about four thousand eight hundred soldiers. We also have our Guard and Reserve, right about six thousand folks there, and we also have our civilian personnel, little over three thousand. Um, our active duty dependent population is just over twenty-two thousand. So when you look at Jay Bear as a whole, we're looking at about a forty-one, almost forty-two thousand person populace. Oh, by the way, we support our retirees as well. And so when you think about the different services that, uh, Jay Bear provides, medical, for example, like medical is, is, uh, is a very robust mission, and, uh, and there's, there's absolutely an importance to the community uh, to ensure that we continue not just medical, but transportation, um, fuel, logistics, all that good stuff, uh, services, uh, to our community. On the top right side, we have a, a total acreage. It's kind of hard to fathom this. I don't think the number does it justice, but just think, uh, over seventy-three thousand acres. Most of that will be training areas. Uh, if you look closer to the slide, you'll see some of the red highlighted on there. That red indicates, um, some training ranges that are used. But when you look at the north side of the slide, where you have Otter Lake, that blob of blue, and then you have Six Mile Lake, that stream of, a string of blue. Um, north of there, we have vast amounts of training ranges that especially our Army soldiers use, uh, not just for airborne operations, for, but for, uh, firing and land navigation as well. And then finally, my, my last point is that, uh, you, you can kind of see two different aspects on Jay Bear. On the left side, you, you see the infrastructure, and that's really your Air Force, um, your Elmandorf Air Force Base side. Uh, you see a little bit of space in the middle, and then the right side is predominantly where our, uh, our, um, soldiers, our Army brothers and sisters reside and work, and that's the Fort Richardson side. Um, prior to two thousand and ten, uh, there is a gate right in that green gap right there that separated the two bases. You had the Air Force Base, uh, separated by a gate, and you had the Army Base. Um, now we're a joint base, right? And so now it's Colonel Mabbett as the Installation Commander. When we talk Jay Bear, we're talking both of those sides. Uh, and so, uh, while we do have separate cultures within the base, we do work extremely hard. As a testament to what you saw was the, uh, the Sergeant Major that's within our, within our staff. You saw an incoming O-six who's going to be the Deputy Installation Commander. It's very much a joint camaraderie that we work hard to make sure that we are a lethal warfighting force together. That's all I have for Jay Bear Fundamentals, Part One. Uh, we'll have, uh, I'll have some more in the future, but, uh, I stand by for any questions.
I need to note that Member Wilson has joined us online, uh, several minutes ago. Members have any questions? Seeing none.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. Um, and, and can we have copies of your, your presentation?
Yes, ma'am. I'd love to share that with you.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Member Lessons.
More of a reflection and a suggestion for the Board as moving forward. When I joined the Board, uh, four years ago, I was welcomed to take various tours of the Anchorage School District. I learned about buses and visited the bus barn. I learned about making eight hundred gallons of spaghetti, uh, at one go. Um, and so there was just sort of like a welcome to ASD, but we didn't actually have any kind of, here is a Jay Bear one oh one. So if there are going to be multiple, uh, of these presentations, perhaps they can be collated and put into somewhere in our, the Board Docs system, uh, for sort of future training resources. I think that'd be helpful. And then maybe just mentally making a note that as Board members join this body, not only getting to tour where the spaghetti sauce is made, but where forty-one thousand community members live is also probably an important thing.
Yes, ma'am. Of course. Thank you for sharing.
Yeah. Noted, and we'll, we'll try to do that. We do appreciate you elaborating a little bit, because, uh, for a lot of people that don't have access to the base, it's kind of a big unknown. Um, my father was, uh, a civilian with the military, so I got to be in the Pentagon some. And that, you learn a lot anytime you go through the gate, so to speak. Um, so I think this is very useful for our staff and the public to just know more and understand our relationship. And, and what I think of is our responsibility to support your mission in being here. Thank you very much.
It's for your support.
Uh, Board Conference and Committee reports. They're probably written. If anyone has anything they want to note. Member Lessons.
I'll just say that our next round of committee meetings are next Thursday, uh, the twenty-seventh, twenty-seventh. Sort of eleven AM onward.
Not this week, but the weekend.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to goal monitoring, and I'll turn that over to the Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll go ahead and invite over our team members who will, uh, lead our, uh, have a discussion with the Board on our K-two M-class goal. We'll give them a moment. All right. So we're joined by our Teaching and Learning Leadership Team and our Director of Assessment and Evaluation. Uh, so I'll go ahead and give the team an opportunity for an opening comment, and then from there, we can have our board discussion. Are there any opening comments you'd like to make?
And if you each would identify yourselves, I'd appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Deanna Carroll. I'm the Director of Assessment and Evaluation. And I wanted to thank, um, Board Member Lessons for her questions. And so I want, I want to start off uh, with her first question, which asked us to provide a brief background, um, around our interim goals, one, point one and one point two. And, um, her question related to why we combined kindergarten and first grade in, um, one point one, and then had second grade separated into, in one point two. And the rationale behind that at the time was that kindergarten and first grade are similar in the fact that our students are assessed in early reading foundational, um, skills. And, um, so that's a particularly, um, specific, specific skill set that we're assessing students at. And, but recognizing that our kindergarteners are coming in at a different, um, level than our first graders. We do break those grade levels up. We disaggregate that information for you, so you can see how our kindergarteners are doing. And then I'll, um, holla our first graders are doing as well.
I will, so you asked for us to introduce ourselves, so I'll go ahead and go around the table. I'm Diana Beltran, and I'm the Senior Director of Teaching and Learning. And to my right, I have Nicole Somerville, and she is the Director of Teaching and Learning for the Elementary. Uh, Nicole and I belong to the elementary side of the, of the, um, teaching and learning. And then we have, um, next to Deanna, we have Bobby Lafferty, and she's the Director of our ELL.
Great. So from there, uh, we welcome Board Member Questions.
Member Bellamy.
Apologize for not sending my questions in earlier. I actually did find them on my phone. I have them. I just didn't send them. Um, if I can just, uh, you know, if you can just review again, interventions that we do for struggling, for the kids that are struggling. And then how, the other part is how are we helping parents or involving parents in that, in, in the, in those interventions?
So at the elementary level, almost all of our schools do something called Win What I Need Time. It's a built-in part of the schedule, which is at least a half an hour, um, a day, four to five days a week. It is part of the Alaska Reads Act, so it's built into the MTSS Plan that we have submitted to the State of Alaska. Uh, we use a variety of different approved curriculums, approved by the state and approved by the school district. We train our teachers quite extensively on how to use the curriculum, and they're very skill-driven, uh, based on the data needs of the students. Um, and so we really want to target the students at their level, what they need, and really making sure that we're hitting those areas. Then we also work with teachers on interventions that can be done within the class. We've been working this year with Bobby's department on adding interventions specifically for our ELL students. And we've just kind of gotten off a whole pilot program with, um, adding something called Frames to Fluency to work on getting our students in our ELL, uh, programs speaking more. Because on our WEDA tests, which are scores within the board report, don't reflect. We are finding that our students are dropping off in their speaking of English, which will then be reflected in their reading, writing, uh, scores moving down. So we are doing all of those pieces. And then the other part to your question was?
Just basically, uh, how are we involving parents?
Uh, so as we involve parents in multiple ways, one is through our parent teacher conferences. We send home, um, their scores according to the M-class reports, uh, the M-class home connect, uh, after each testing period, according to the Alaska Reads Act, and we monitor this, principals monitor and teachers monitor, and then put it in the TIF plans every two weeks. For students that are far below proficient, parents need to be notified of the progress that their students are making. Then to help parents help their students make progress, we also have our Reading for Life series, where we've done videos and tutorials for parents, as well as weekly, um, tips that our Title One Department has put together that we text out to parents every single week on ways and tips that they can do. And then schools have a variety of other information nights and opportunities to work with parents.
Thank you.
Member Lessons.
Great, thanks. Um, so, you know, what, some of the questions that I sent in had me pulling information or reflections together from multiple slides at the same time. Uh, but that's, uh, that's just what we're going to go forward with right now. Um, so I had a question about slides three and eight. Maybe it's more of an observation, and, and really, I think, a celebration, right? So this fall's K-one cohort here was assessed as having a higher, a larger number percent, a larger percent of students categorized as above or well above benchmark than last year's K-one cohort, which is great. Uh, similarly, um, slide eight shows that this year's cohort of second graders came in more strongly in the, in the fall. And in both cases, right, and in the winter assessment, this year's K-one kiddos are in a stronger place. More kids are at that above or well above benchmark, and more second graders are above, well above benchmark than their counterparts a year ago. And I guess I just, I want to celebrate that because I, I think, and And I guess I just want to celebrate that because I think and I see heads nodding, right, this is something, this is a manifestation of the growth that's happened in our young learners. We're now in the second year of the new CKLA curriculum. So I just, I think that's really important, right? Our kids are coming in stronger. Do you have any additional reflections on that?
So we were reflecting on on what you sent us. One of the things that we wanted to highlight is that the implementation of CKLA went out really, was implemented really well. And I think the teachers are doing a great job with the components within the curriculum. But they have also been very much engaged in training in the trainings that have been provided by Nicole's team for the different interventions. And they have a menu to choose from. So it's not just one or two interventions. They have several they can pull from like phonics for reading, Ufly, Boost. And then like Nicole stated, they've been doing additional work in terms of redeveloping the scope and sequence for our kids that need differentiation. And so there's a lot of new opportunities for teachers to be able to draw from. And then the PLCs help because it gives them time to review the data and to make those adjustments necessary for instruction. So those were some of the things we were reflecting on. We're pretty proud of the work they've been doing because it has been a heavy lift, as you know, for the REEDS Act. And they're moving forward and doing a great job, so.
Thank you for that.
Member Bow me.
Oh, I didn't turn my mic off from before. But I do have, you know, we're always compared to not just others in our state, other district, I guess, other kids in the state and nationally. Do we have, how does our scores compare? I mean, where are we in the? I mean, if we look at us in our state, how are we doing? And then if we can project nationally, how are we doing? And it may be that you might need more time for that question because I didn't send it in and I do apologize.
It's okay. We anticipated that question. So in taking a look at our kindergarten and first graders, we do know that our Kimby kiddos come in a little bit behind the curve as far as nationally is concerned. Our kindergarten students started out at 25.1%, which I think I can get back to. But then they made huge gains between fall and winter. And we know that nationally, kindergarteners tend to do that just because they're getting that high quality instruction. Nationally, students in the fall were at 36%. And then in the winter, they were at 52%. So we're not quite closing the gap, but our kids are making gains along the lines of national students in the same cohort as far as benchmarks or the percent of students above or far above benchmark. And then for our first graders, they actually started out 3.9% in the fall above the national average. We did see a slight decrease in our first grade scores or numbers of students above or at benchmark. And we don't want to shy away from that dip. You know, it provides us an opportunity to take a look and see where we really have to work to support those kiddos and what challenges they might have faced. But when you're looking at them overall, they are right where their cohorts are nationally. And that kind of gives us good hope that we had caught them up in kindergarten and we hope to see kind of that conditional growth over the next year or so. And so as our kiddos go through from kindergarten to first grade, we like the trend that we're currently seeing and we're hoping to continue that each cohort starts to catch up and maybe even be above that national average.
Member Lessons?
Yeah, this is another juggle, a couple of slides question. Okay, so I had a question about when you compare slides six and eight. Why did I say six? And maybe I meant seven. But anyways, we're going to look at the question that I have. So my observation was that we've got year-over-year growth among our economically disadvantaged student populations, right? We've got more of them at first grade that are where we want them than in kindergarten and more of them still in second grade than in first grade or kindergarten. But what's happening is that students who are not economically disadvantaged are also growing, which is, which is great. But what I think is the reality, we've got two realities, right? You've got non-economically disadvantaged students who started out ahead and are accelerating and are economically disadvantaged students are accelerating, but not fast enough. And so the question is really, is a faster rate of growth for economically disadvantaged students possible? If so, what kinds of inputs are needed? This is a question I'd like to serve and then sort of amplify it down to Juno. What do we need to accelerate the learning of more than half of our students, really?
So research is really out there right now on the, what is the?
The inputs on high quality.
Not the, not the high quality instruction because that's our teachers are there, but the, we're doing air tutoring because it's high dose tutoring. And so it's really focusing on one to two, two, three students at a time, right? So if you're taking that to Juno, it would have the ability to have staffing and lower class sizes to have, to be able to offer up the high dose tutoring. So that would be my input. And that's just one thing, but that would be huge, right? To see quicker growth, there's a lot of research behind high dose tutoring.
Okay, so we're going to do some quick, quick math, just right? So we've got, let's say, 3,000 kids in each cohort, give or take 3,000 kindergartners, first graders. So we've got nine K1, two, right? 9,000 kiddos, we'll just say a little bit more than half of them are economically disadvantaged. The many of those kids need accelerated growth. So maybe we need 3,500 to 4,000 kids to get high dose tutoring. That's a lot of tutors at one to three. And how many tutors, how long does the high dose tutoring session last?
So the high dose tutoring typically you want 30 minutes, four to five times a week. So it could be part of the WIN. The issue, I mean, you could consider WIN as a high dose tutoring. The problem is that most of our staffing levels at our schools are not at the point that we can get our group sizes small enough for it to be as effective as it needs to be. So you wouldn't want groups more than four to five kids at the absolute most and very targeted skills. Well, none of our schools have that many staff members because if the teacher's teaching four kids and you've got with class size increases, 25, what are the other 20 kids doing? And most likely you've got multiple groups that need that intervention, not just your lowest of your low kids, but you're going to have several groups of kids that need those interventions. So what is everybody else doing? And there's only so many minutes in the day and we still need them to have core reading instruction. They just, you can't spend all day intervening your way out of core instruction problem. So our first issue is we need to get really good, high quality, regular core instruction. We need our regular classrooms to be straight grade levels where we don't have them having to spend half of their time juggling between two different grade levels. We need smaller class sizes. That would be lovely so that the teachers can really concentrate. And then if we're going to be able to do some interventions, we need small enough groups. Now, a lot of people for the high dose tutoring are doing it online. They're finding different ways. We're experimenting this summer with some high dose tutoring for our third graders. I don't know how, you know, when you get down to the littles, I don't know if you really want to do that online. Our experience with COVID and Zoom school wasn't great. But when it's only a group of two, you know, what are you going to do? Because you're right, Member Lessons, that is a lot of staff.
And thank you for that answer. How many, if I were, if I were working in a school as a tutor and I'm working with these three or four kiddos for a half an hour, can I immediately go to my next group of three or four kids? Or do I need, how many doses, how many rounds of tutoring can I, can I do in a day as a, as a full-time tutor?
Our reading interventionists that we have right now typically do six groups of six to eight kids each. And then they often will double dose many of those kids for segments of 15 minutes where they just pull them out of class for a quick, this is what we covered. Let's do some flashcards to remember the letters and the sounds that we covered. So typically, you know, half an hour doesn't, you know, you would think if you just bang, bang, banged them out. But when you balance lunch schedules, recess and how you can pull the kids and are they missing math, are they missing core instruction? Typically, our reading interventionists can really squeeze in about six solid groups for a full half an hour.
Okay, one last follow-up. So if we have 10 reading interventionists that we've deleted from our budget and I think they should come back and we're going to use $1,000 BSA as part of that solution, what I think I'm hearing from you is that we need something like 100 reading specialists to tackle 36 to 48 kids each in any given day. Well, but, but all of them need it. I'm just, I'm sketching this out.
Yeah, and if this, if this is what we determine the way to solve the problem without looking at other issues.
Sure. I mean, if you had a single laser focused on
intervening.
intervening your way out of this problem.
My concern is, let's say we do this and we don't tackle our other issues and all of our kids in our other grades are in combo classes, we're going to be intervening on them next year because they didn't get their full two hours of tier one instruction. So we're just continuing to dig our hole. We need to make sure all of our kids are getting good quality instruction every single day. We can't intervene our way out of poor tier one reading and mathematics instruction.
Any other questions from the board?
So we have, how many reading interventionists serving how many schools?
Currently, we have 10 reading interventionists. Four of them are full-time at schools and the other six of them are shared between nearby schools. And so two schools. So basically, well, 16 schools are getting an interventionist either half-time or full-time right now. Some of those schools are title schools, some of them are not. It was based on a combination of data needs, combo classrooms. Many of those interventions are at least spending part of their day offsetting combo classes by teaching reading for one half of the combo. So instead of taking the class all day, they're just teaching the reading for the combo class. So at least those kids are getting a quality core.
And that meets the, the conditions of the Alaska REEDS Act.
Certainly.
Okay. Interesting. I'm done.
Member Lessons?
This isn't something that I submitted ahead of time, but I am reflecting on, there was a presentation that our Director of Preschools recently gave to the Alaska Legislature on what would happen if the legislature changed the .5 ADM in the formula to a full one. It would generate additional revenue for ASD to invest in our preschool. And as part of the slide deck and Board Members got this in Board Connect, there is, there are some pretty astounding figures for what's happening when we do have kiddos in ASD preschool. We are, we just, if you compare for economically disadvantaged students, the percentage of the difference between students who enrolled in an ASD pre-K and did not have an ASD pre-K is profound for economically disadvantaged students, students who are English language learners and students with disabilities, right? Significantly fewer students are considered well below benchmark once they're, once they've gone through the ASD pre-K system. Fewer, I mean, a lower percentage of students are below benchmark. Higher percentages of students are at or above because of their time in the ASD pre-K program. And I'm not going to go over the numbers here, but I just want to say it's an astounding proof of the value of early childhood education and exposure to a school system. And I think that's something that I hope other Board Members and community members will support should the legislature continue to have conversations about pivoting the formula from a .5 ADM for pre-K to a one. I think that's an enormous investment that the state could make in the success of our students and make our kindergarten, kindergarten teachers' jobs easier and more successful. We can build on what the preschool teachers will have done. Which one? Amplify that.
Thank you. Any other questions from Board Members? Oh, yes, Madison.
So I do notice as Lessons did bring up, there is a significant difference in those who are English learners and non-English learners in whether they are at or above the benchmark. And so I do want to ask, are there any other specific resources that can help English learners specifically prepare more to get higher scores on the reading state assessment itself?
Thank you for your question. So what we are doing right now, and Nicole mentioned the work that we've been doing with, with teaching and learning to implement some interventions that are specifically designed to support our English learners. So last year was our first year of implementation with the ELD, which is English Language Development. It's a specific curriculum that's designed to increase that listening and speaking. And, you know, they say that what you, whatever you can say, you can write. If you can't say it, it's very difficult to write it. If you can understand it by listening, you can read it. If you can't understand it by listening, it's very difficult to read it. So increasing those listening and speaking skills is our first priority. Last year, we implemented at the elementary level that ELD curriculum for newcomers only. So students who are coming in brand new to English, brand new to the country, brand new to ASD at the elementary level. This year, as Nicole mentioned, we've been piloting some additional interventions that incorporate that listening and speaking practice and also do a hybrid. So whenever a student comes in that is ELL, they have a number of different barriers between them and that success at that on-grade level, reading or math or whatever the content is. So they have the learning that other students at their grade level have. And then they also have the language that's associated with that that prevents them from, you know, reaching that grade level, level, grade level content, accessing the grade level content. So a lot of what our schools do and our teams do, our instructional teams do, is doing kind of a triage, right? So what is the most immediate barrier that we can work to eliminate? So for a student who's coming in that's brand new to English, their first barrier, their most immediate barrier is that listening and speaking. So being able to understand what's going on in the classroom, being able to access social conversations with their peers, understand what their teacher is saying, understand the context of what they're being expected to read and understand. And the second tier for that, and I want to use the word tier, but I know we get a little mixed up with all the MTSS. Everything's kind of a tier. But that next level, I guess, of triage is those students who have that social language. And then they're moving into that need, their next need is that reading. So what we've been working on with Nicole's team is a hybrid. So they're getting that listening and speaking practice that's very geared towards the needs of an ELL student and that it incorporates the phonics, the reading skills that are that foundational level as well. No matter if a student is in kindergarten or if they're in fifth grade. And I know the data that we're looking at right now is, is K2. But kids are definitely coming in at different times and different places. So that's one thing that we've done. The other thing that we've done in terms of specific supports that are for ELL students is a lot of our ELL staff, their time when they're not pulling out students is providing inclusion support. So they're pushing into the classroom to support students with the content in the classroom with the instruction and really training up our And really training up our ELL tutors and our ELL staff so that that time when they push into the classroom is very structured. It's very focused. It's focused on scaffolding. So ensuring that students are provided with the scaffolds they need to access that core content at the same level as their peers. And also ensuring that they're provided with their LEP accommodations. So if a student needs something read out loud, if a student needs additional time, you know, all of those pieces are, are put into place in the classroom. So those are some of the things that, um, that we started last year with our new plan of service that was, um, approved by the state in two thousand twenty-three. And, um, and this year we're increasing that to the next level of triage. And, um, we look forward to seeing how that, that goes.
I will say these assessments are not like regular tests that you can prepare for, like study for. So kids either know their letters and can identify them. So the biggest thing that we ask is read with your child every night. Read to your child, read to your siblings. More books, the better. And we have lots of books that we're willing to give you and loan you and check out the library and read, read, read as much as possible. But there isn't like a course you can take to pass these assessments.
Thank you. Any other questions? Member lessons?
Yeah, I had a question that was kind of granular, granular about slide eight. And I was looking at the drop in second graders above, well, above benchmark. When I looked at slide eight, it looked to me like really of, you know, of the, of the decrease in fifty fewer second graders who are assessed in that sort of above, well, above benchmark. They were all economically disadvantaged students. Maybe I'm reading that wrong, but the question to me is like why, like what are the other, I mean, is, are we, do we need to be talking about, like, what are the factors that shifts a student maybe at a broader level from being where they need to be to not being where they need to be, you know, from fall to winter? Is it combo classes? Is it chronic absenteeism? I mean, what are some of the variables that are going to most strongly impact us, a child's? Um, the trajectory that they maybe have been on and, and derail them?
I would say there's a couple of things. First of all, I would really hesitate to look at that data and say that it's these fifty-two kids that is making the difference in the EDS because you really would need to look child by child who moved in, who moved out, who took the tests here, who took the tests there. Because it, it could be very different kids we're talking about that were from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. And so you would need to do a much more granular look at individual students before we could say it was these particular EDS students, um, that made the difference or not. Um, I can say some of the difference between the beginning of the year to the middle of the year, especially within our first graders and some of our second graders is just the rate at which they pick up language in that, um, by this, by the time that you're in the middle of second grade, it's the rate for your oral rating, oral language fluency. And it's, um, the prosody in which you're reading and the accuracy. And so there's less percentage of your overall score is based on knowing your letter names and sounds and some of those younger discrete skills and more of the higher percentage of your overall composite score is based on the number of words you're reading correctly within the minute. And so there is a change there. And then when our kids move to third grade and you compare the MAP scores, you can't really compare them as closely than with the M-class because we're looking at two different kinds of tests. So it, it's one of those things. I would say all of the things you mentioned go into what could be causing problems. Attendance, combo classes, um, long-term subs, short-term subs, um, win, uh, maybe changes within win groups. Every school is different. Every child is going to be different. And it's really hard to just give an overall picture. Um, as a district, one of my first things is we looked at the school scores and we noticed that there was a big difference between a lot of our scores within second grade. And so we said, is this a curricular issue? Is there something different within the second grade curriculum compared to the first grade curriculum? And one of the things we noticed is that there isn't as much repeated reading opportunities within the second grade curriculum. And repeated reading has a high rate of positive influence on kids, taking the same passage and reading it multiple times. There is a lot of opportunities for kids to read out loud within the curriculum, but they read new passages each time. And so we're doing kind of a field study where we've, we're working with five different classrooms the next six weeks where we've got a process or a protocol in mind where we're going to train up the kids and the teachers and take some data to see, is this going to make a difference? Some title schools are kids that are economically disadvantaged. Some schools or classrooms where they're not. And a quick protocol, three minutes max, because we don't have a lot of time in our school day. And to see if maybe we need to add a routine or take a routine or change a routine to the curriculum to see if maybe there's a curricular issue as opposed to just that classroom or that kid or anything like that. So data can be used for so many different things. And for my department, it's, do we look as a whole to see if there's a, a big gap?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sing none. Thank you very much. That brings us to our first opportunity for public comment. Board sets aside one, a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting for public comment. Um, if we run over that hour, uh, we'll either extend or we will have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting. During public comment, board members went on to answer questions or engage in discussion. This is the public's time to speak to the board and our time to listen to the people that have come to speak. Welcome the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through their comments. However, to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. Um, we do set aside, um, students to testify first because we want them to be able to go home and do homework and get a good night's sleep. And secondly, we have parents that have students in attendance. We hear from them. And then we take all other people in the order in which they signed up. So I will call two names and if those people can come down and one will speak and I'll call another name. If the first speaker leaves, the second person can take their place as a way to work our way through the list and hear from everybody tonight. So starting with student testimony, Avi, Ava Cosseth and Alessandra Sanchez, if you would come forward and have a seat at the podium. And if you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes to testify. And, um, I should also add that when it's down to thirty seconds, you'll hear a little bell ring just to let you know you're coming near the end of the testimony time. And there'll be a timer on the screen right in front of me that tells you as well. So if you'll state your name for the record. Mm-hmm. If you'll get a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Alessandra Sanchez. I go to Hanshu Middle School. And this is what happened to me on March third of twenty twenty-five. When I walked into my classroom in second period, I sat down and got my folder. Then my teacher came. My teacher sat down and took sat down and looked at me and said that I needed to take my, my traditional head covering off. Then I said, no, it's part of my culture. When I was trying to explain, she then called the security. And I said, okay. She sent it, she sent one of the students to get security. Then when the student was walking out, the student yelled out to take my platock off. The security spoke to me in private. They said it was a beautiful head covering, but the school rules said it's not allowed. No hats, no heads. I said, it's as different as a church, everyday traditional head covering. And it keeps me safe. I said, then she said that the only thing that keeps me safe is the cross that I was wearing. Then she said, now let's take it off so I don't get in more trouble. I took my platock off. I said, I was sad, but I kept my day going. So I don't feel sad. And I think the security guard was wrong that she said my cross is the only thing that keeps me safe, safe, my platock can do.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. And Ava Cosseth, if you're here. Conrad Spillane. That is our list of students. Um, for parents. Daniel, Danielle Cosseth and Rochelle Sanchez, if you're here. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. If you'll state your name for the record. You have to kind of get right in front of the microphone if you want to move. Yeah, that one will work too. Just put there, you go. That's perfect. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Conrad. I'm here for the school board. And I'm disappointed because you voted for Rilka Shula not to get like an elementary school. And I want a bigger playground, a bigger school. And we love our teachers. Thanks.
Thank you very much for your testimony. I appreciate it. And just to check, Ava Cosseth, just to check again. I don't believe she's here. Yes, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Danielle Calseth. Good evening, board members. It's me again, Danielle Calseth, a parent of two Rilka Shula students. This is my third time testifying in support of moving Rilka into the Lakewood Elementary Building. The other times I have been here, I had hope and faith in the process of fair and just procedure of what would happen to our school next year. Tonight, I am here with disappointment and distrust in how this school board operates. However, I am not here to point fingers. I am here tonight to ask you to rescind memorandum one oh six. I am here to ask those of you who may have crossed an ethical boundary with making this decision to make this right. To stop showing bias, to think of this as long-term and not just over the next year or two or three. And to stop this madness of pitting schools against each other because one is your people. As public servants, shouldn't you be for all people? For all the children of ASD? Prior to our current building, Rilka moved three different times. We have been paying an astronomical amount of rent every single year. We have never been in an ASD facility. And therefore we have been put into financial hardship. We are taking this decision of not moving Rilka into Lakewood very seriously. Because we had hope that this was going to be our last move. The Lakewood building would become our permanent forever home. Not just a pit stop until we reach the ultimate goal of building our own building. Is playing musical schools the right decision for a school district that is in a dire financial situation? Please prove to the community that you are all not inept by rescinding memorandum one oh six and revoting without two board members who have a conflict of interest and an established bias. But I'm sure asking for a revote is as much of a waste of time as you had our community testify for a school for the past three months. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Rochelle Sanchez and Catherine Smith. You'll state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Rochelle Sanchez. On March third, twenty twenty-five, my daughter Alessandra Sanchez was stripped of her religious traditional right of wearing her platock by her teacher. March fourth, I had two meetings, one with the head principal, and she heard my concerns and was sympathetic to what happened. However, the second meeting with the vice principal and the teacher did not go well. Not only was I dismissed by the vice principal of Hanshu with my concern, she backed up what the teacher had done to my daughter. I demanded an apology from the teacher and she refused. We are in year twenty twenty-five and racism against our native students and youth is still alive and well. Case in point, what happened to my daughter? This has ripple affected even to my youngest daughters who attend Takoo Elementary. They were afraid to wear their platocks because of what happened to their oldest sister. People like this teacher and vice principal should not be in our schools. They, they took no accountability for the blatant act of discrimination and racism that happened to my daughter. No reconciliation between the teacher and my daughter has taken place. My daughter Alessandra was stripped of not only her religious rights, her rights to our native, our native ways and her native ways. This is also, I would also push this as far as holistic genocide against my daughter. For all the staff in ASD, I'm putting you on notice for the aggressive racism and discrimination that happened to my daughter Alessandra.
Thank you for your testimony. Catherine Smith.
Good evening, Catherine Smith. I sit here again, reiterating a real urgency for the Rixul relocation. The ASD board should have immediately recognized the crucial timing on this issue. Rilka has had five months before the facility lease expires, not three years for a better fit. These needs were repeatedly conveyed in a timely manner. In an era where the quality of instruction significantly influences our future, educational performance can be directly related to the state of school facilities. And Rikul Shul is actively seeking an existing ASD facility as a long-term, substantial and sustainable option for alleviating financial stress of our school budget. How did the ASD board not recognize this is the best fit for Lakewood? The ASD administration was right in choosing Rilka Shul for the relocation recommendation to Lakewood Elementary. In consideration of memorandum one oh six, I hereby convey that your vote left us in disbelief, confusion and frustration. You disregarded an effectively sound fiscal and moral repurposing recommendation. You removed Rilka Shul and replaced it with a school already housed in an ASD facility building. We do not appreciate the board's failure to recognize and understand the facts reiterated by the ASD administration. We need a school facility that supports our students, a real lunchroom, a real library, spaces for the bed, ELL and interventions for our students. We utilize all our space, but this is not financially sustainable for our future. In the end, it was, we don't know what to do with Rilka. And that echoed forcefully through our community. Several board members acknowledged this failure publicly in discussion and recognized the necessity for the ASD board to do better. The board must create a long-term, fiscally responsible plan for all charter schools. We are Rilk and we are ASD. We all stood together before you and called on you, our local ASD school board, to act in this pressing issue in favor of Rilka. And you let us down. Our families will continue to support the opportunity for a facility relocation to foster our children's academic growth and progress. Ideally, we would like to see the school board revote on memorandum one oh six in favor of Rilka. Alternatively, I see you will be presenting a memorandum one twenty-eight this evening. And although Abbott Loop may not be a permanent solution, it may be the next step in our transition to for, uh, forever home. Our program has moved at least three times since two thousand and seven. But ultimately, our students are our focus. We are enduring in a full-hearted community effort in pursuing an ASAT facility.
Thank you for your testimony. Elaine Squire and Jenna Squire. Elaine Squire and Gina Squire. You'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
All right, good evening, board. My name is Elaine Squire. I'm here as part of the Rooka Shula community to share my voice and urging you to revisit memorandum one oh six and bring it to a vote. I did not want to be here tonight. I thought the facts presented on the March first meeting and the weeks before would speak for themselves. And the hours of testimony would clearly show the right path to take. This year, the administration put together recommendations for use of the two school building closures. These recommendations were gained through diligent data gathering and analysis. The information gained clearly showed that Rooka Shula would be the best fit for the Lakewood building. However, despite the evidence, four of you voted with emotion rather than reason. You chose to move a school already residing in an ASD facility to Lakewood, leaving us in the lurch. The building cited and or the board cited a decision on December eight seventeenth to prioritize that school. But there is no record of it in the minutes. This suggests private conversations on the matter and a lack of transparency. This board publicly prioritized one school over another despite facts standing against such a decision. You are meant to support all schools in the district. In addition, the board permitted an APC member to speak outside the public testimony period. Procedural inconsistency that suggests favoritism and undermines public trust. This board is playing a game of musical schools. Rather than moving one school and keeping the other in their current ASE building, you're discussing moving two this year. And one and then us again if you find us a new building, if. It's a waste of time and resources and a completely unnecessary sequence of events. Rooka Shula is up against the wall with our expensive lease and the time constraint we are under. Even with a bargaining chip within Abbott Loop, this is a position we could have been saved from. Our families deserve fair and responsible leadership and you have a legal responsibility to consider the facts. March four felt anything but fair and responsible. The board has been told repeatedly that objectively the wrong decision has been made. It is because of all of this that I and the rest of the Rooka community would like this board to bring this matter back to a vote. Mistake you made, but a correction to that mistake is available to you. If Abbott Loop is given to us, rest assured, we will make it work. Rooka Shula is nothing if not capable at making the best out of a bad situation. We are a community, not just a building. However, let it be said that you let us down. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Adam Leggett. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Gina Squire and I've been attending school board meetings for the last several years now when I'm not working myself. I don't have anything. It's not that I don't have anything else better to do, but it's my way of staying informed and knowing how to support our children. On a side note, I want to commend the security staff. You're doing such a great job maintaining order and keeping us all safe. I chose to speak up tonight on the process that appears to have gone very wrong someplace by not awarding Rooka Shula. The vacant element Lakewood Elementary School Building. Despite the recommendations from your own ASD administration, the amount of testimony that was presented. And simple budgetary facts, the school board has appeared to be making a decision that is unfair and politically motivated for some reason. The fact that at the eleventh hour decision was made to recommend another school, then quickly approved. Appears to be premeditated and something and and that something unfair is going on behind the scenes. This board must be transparent, showing integrity and fairness to every student. These types of decisions erode confidence of the public in the school board and the overall process. This board claims to prioritize timelines, space optimization, student enrollment, financial efficiency. Yet you went against every one of these when you denied Rooka Shula at the last moment the opportunity to relocate to Lakewood Elementary. This board also allowed ANCCS representatives the opportunity to speak outside public public comment period. But denied Rooka the same opportunity. This is favoritism and suggests bias in the decision-making process. The board failed to enforce enforce its policies undermining school trust when the board publicly prioritized one school over another. Voting violating Alaska statute fourteen point twelve point zero nine zero and ASD board policy BB nine two seven zero. How in good conscience can you make ask the public to contact our governor and legislature to raise the BSA? But highly but make highly irresponsible fiscal decisions yourself, ignoring and defying your own ASD administrations. Thorough analysis and recommendation of relocating Rooka Shula to Lakewood Elementary. Costing not only unnecessary money, but uprooting two schools instead of one. The administration followed the law, but the school board did not. I strongly urge the school board to do the honorable and right thing by calling for a revote, correcting the wrong decision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Oh, and sorry, and make awarding Lakewood Elementary School Building to Rooka Shula. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Leggett again and Alicia Hildy. And next on the list is Cameron Vincent Lang. Welcome back, Ms. Hildy. Uh, Cameron Vincent Lang. Yeah, I said, welcome back. You'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Alicia Hildy and I'm an attorney and a nationally certified board governance coach. Last year, I worked directly with school board members representing two million of the nation's school children. I'm blessed to walk alongside politicians who are motivated to do whatever is in their power to improve outcomes for children. And the secret to improving outcomes lies in the power of an individual board member. Being willing to take accountability for how his actions or inactions impact the success of the school district and take responsibility for fixing problems. I have very high expectations for the Anchorage School Board and I'm confident you can demonstrate the excellence and leadership our students deserve. The board voted to repurpose Lakewood Elementary from one charter school to another charter school last meeting. Charter schools are nonprofit vendors with a contract to provide educational services. When the superintendent brings you an approval for a construction company to provide services to remodel a school. The board does not swap out for a different construction company for one that you like better. It is contractual relationship governed by contract law, Alaska statutes and board's own policy. The state charter school statute reads a school district shall offer to a charter school the right of first refusal for a lease of space in an existing school district facility. The school district, not the school board, offers an available facility to charter schools. This has been the practice in this district. The term right of first refusal is a contract term providing a right to a particular party, in this instance, a charter school. If the offer to a charter school for the right of first refusal came after a board vote, then the statute would say the school board makes the offer. The plain language of the statute controls. The school district having a less formal procedure for making such an offer does not negate the existence of an offer. As evidenced by the multiple written written documents recommending Lakewood only for Rooka Shula. Rooka Shula's APC conducting surveys to report back their community's willingness to move. And communication by the APC, parents and teachers confirming understanding that an offer for the facility had been made. The administration would not have been able to bring this before the board for approval if it had not first been offered to Rooka Shula as required by the charter school statute. Additionally, if a principal chooses not to follow board policy, that principal will lose her job, a legally enforceable firing. If a student violates board policies and expelled, that child experiences significant legal consequences for not complying with board policy. My request is that the board also follow your own policy. The Anchorage School Board's operating procedures state that a conflict of interest exists when a member has a personal or financial interest in a matter coming before the board. That could remember render the member unable to devote complete loyalty and singleness of purpose to the public interest. And shall abstain from deliberations in voting, even if there's just an appearance of impropriety, specifically including conflicts of interest with vendors. Board members should understand that conflict of interest or perception of conflict of interest undermines public trust. As disheartened as I am, I'm confident the school board will follow the law. And hopefully you will choose to self-correct and remedy your mistake because a mistake in understanding of the law and board policy happens. That's why rescinding a vote is permissible. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, Wendy Mo is next on our list and Mr. Vincent Lang, you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Cameron Vincent Lang. I'm the assistant principal of Rooka Shula. Uh, good evening. I want to reflect on the right sizing process this school year specifically concerning Rooka and offer constructive feedback. Right sizing faced several challenges that impacted its effectiveness. Ongoing enrollment shifts necessitate further right sizing to ensure all students have access to necessary services. Right sizing was introduced to address these needs with repurposing allowing to accommodate growing programs such as charter schools. I urge I urge the board to uh stay committed to right sizing despite its difficulty. I'll be curious to see which schools are considered for closure during the twenty five twenty six school year per the directive of the December seventeenth meeting. For the twenty five twenty six school year, I recommend considering right sizing and repurposing plans happen simultaneously. I understand the reluctance to do this due to concerns about school competition. However, we saw such issues arise when four charter programs had to compete during repurposing. Addressing both simultaneously allows for a more predictable budget cycle, especially since charter schools must approve their budgets by December. There were also missed opportunities to support both Rooka and ANCCS. First voter approved bond funds were not applied to improving ANCCS's current facility despite their wish to stay in that building. Second Baxter, which was slated for closure, could have been repurposed for that program. However, the board eliminated that option. So here's some viable options moving forward. First was to conduct a revote based on the facts presented by the administration with decision-making that should be focused on immediate needs. But we learned this evening that's likely not going to occur. Second, uh, consider relocating both Rooka and ANCCS, moving ANCCS to Lakewood and Rooka to the Abbott Loop facility. Bond funds could still be used to improve the Abbott Loop facility with additional funding placed in future CIPs to meet the program's needs. While this plan involves moving two schools and places ANCCS farther from its community, it could work. If this approach is taken, prioritizing a permanent location for Rooka. Particularly and hopefully within the service height area where our feeder program is is essential. A future school closure in the twenty five twenty six right sizing cycle could provide that opportunity. In the meantime, I'd like to stress that in the short term, the Abbott Loop facility can meet the needs of Rooka Shula's program. Um, in terms of its size, location, student supports, and yes, even student safety. President Holloman's ASD memorandum one two eight is approved, which I hope it can be. I hope it will not be viewed as fulfillment to amendment three in ASD memorandum one oh six. While a move to AN the ANCCS facility or the Abbott Loop facility could provide temporary and necessary immediate support to Rooka. It would not offer the same long-term facility support that a Lakewood facility would have provided. I urge the board to stand strong with the final actions taken to prioritize Rooka for a future school closure if those closures meet the needs of our program. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. John Flynn Blanford, if you'll come down and Ms. Mo, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's Wendy. Born and raised in Alaska, my mom was the first family member in my family to go to an ASD school, West High School. I followed at O'Malley Airport Heights, Abbott Loop, Service, Hanshu and back to service. I am an involved parent. Um, I my two older daughters went to Chugatch Optional. Um, and I was an involved parent there as well as PTSA president at Romig Middle School. And currently the treasurer at West High School. My children are third generation attendees at ASD. My two younger children currently attend Rooka Shula. My eight-year-old started out elementary at Baxter. Rooka Shula was not on a radar at the time, although as my husband speaks fluent German. He was an exchange student during his senior year in Germany and was uh of the opinion he could teach them at home. We switched switched to Rooka Shula after the first week of school. At Baxter due to the challenges in the classroom for him to have an adequate learning environment. It was not his teacher, but unfortunately a few students that made it dangerous and impossible for him to have a positive and safe learning experience. Rooka Shula has been an amazing opportunity for our children. Our oldest son is a second grader and our youngest son is a kindergartner. They are striving and advancing in both their English and German learning opportunities. Rooka Shula is a true community of students, teachers, staff, administration and parents. The staff knows the names of the students as they pass through the doors and the hallways of the school. It is a welcoming place to come and learn and grow. Abbott Loop has been repurposed for Alaska Native Cultural Charter School. They have made the building their own. The school has approved occupancy through twenty eight twenty nine school year. It is also a good location for their families that attend there. They also have room for more students currently as I understand it. Abbott Loop could be the forever home for ANCC. ANCC's values, as I have researched them, are based on culture, language and community. I for one would be willing to brainstorm ways to help this community stay in Abbott Loop with the building improvements necessary to make it their forever home. They also have two point five million in their savings. Rooka Shula is a community that values culture, language and community. Unlike ANCC who currently has a home through twenty eight twenty nine school year. Rooka Shula has a lease that's expiring at the end of this year. In addition to the current requirements, Rooka Shula's budget for the rental of the building is seven hundred and thirty eight thousand. The current amount in Rooka Shula's savings is one point four five million, one point four five. I am sure is with the lack of student BSA funding from the state, that will also impact Rooka Shula's budget as more of the funding. Will be spent on increased rental obligations if we are not moved to an ASD building and given the same opportunities as other schools and for the other charter schools.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your testimony. Maggie Wyrens, if you'll come down and Ms. Blanchard, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Jocelyn Blanchard. On behalf of Rooka Shula community, we stand together, united in our commitment to success. And financial stability for our school. I am a taxpayer. I am an ASD business partner. I'm a dedicated parent to three children who attend Rooka Shula. I'm here today to advocate for the reconsideration of the last meeting. Vote or to uh if the board deems necessary for us to move into Abbott and remain as a priority for us to move again. And when there is another building available. I applaud the motion tonight to amend the agenda. It is disappointing that it was not seconded. Rooka has been advocating for financial assistance to secure a permanent home since December of two thousand twenty three. Yes, twenty twenty three. We understood the district's hesitancy to close the school while addressing another school's needs publicly. Yet the uh the board's recent decisions have demonstrated a willingness to prioritize some schools over others. Leaving Rooka Shula abandoned in the eleventh hour. It is not okay to clo- if it if it is not okay to close the school without formal public disclosure. As mentioned in many meetings before, why would it not be okay for a new school to be added for moving? Without pub correct public comment. Perhaps certain board members believe our school can be overlooked because we are not a Title One school. Or because our student demographics are not considered a certain members constituents. However, Rooka Shula is a very diverse institution that actively supports four hundred and eighty five ASD students. It is now clear that our urgent financial and facilities concerns are being disregarded in favor of a convoluted. Costly and inefficient relocation process. Our lease ends in five months, not the year twenty twenty eight, twenty twenty nine. The two current the current board's decision will result in initially four school moves. Instead of one or two, contradicting the very purpose of the right sizing initiative. A move from a move ANCCS to Lakewood and Rooka into Abbott because AC and ANCCS can fill the building. With the hundred people that are on their waiting list. If there's a hundred people on their waiting list, then why are they not in that school? Why are we able to move into that school with four hundred and eighty five students if they can't fill it with their waiting list that they have? Ask the district about the waiting list. The current board's decision, I'm sorry. Um, Rooka Shula has done everything right. We've demonstrated our school urgently needs a new home. We've provided clear data showing that our parents will follow us to a new location. Not a Facebook group page, yet we are being asked to endure an unnecessary multiple moves by the school board plays political game. If ASD wants to fulfill a fund, multiple school relocations and go continue dump.
Thank you for your testimony. Tony Walsh and Ms. Wyrens, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Maggie Wyrens. Good evening. My name is Maggie Wyrens. On behalf of the Rooka Shula community, we stand together. United in our commitment to the success and financial sustainability of our school. First, I would like to respectfully request that the board reconsider their decisions on memo number one oh six through a revote tonight. Second, I would like to thank the full board for their commitment to protect the educational opportunities of every child in ASD. You've been asked to make impossible decisions. As an APC member, I have also been in the unenviable position of making tough calls in the last few years. As an APC member, I have also been in the unenviable position of making tough calls in the last few years. We are all making decisions based on the unfortunate driving factor of finances, for which we are all advocating to the legislature to remedy. When I struggled with making decisions to make budget cuts, it became clear that I was too involved with every aspect of our school community, often working weeks at a time as a sub for the very same people whose positions I would be voting to cut. I had to refocus on what I was elected to do as an APC member. We are owed the same recognition of potential bias, lack of impartiality, and conflicts of interest in our elected ASD board members. We deserve candor, integrity, transparency, and reasoned statements during public discourse, especially when it appears not to be aligned with publicly known facts and administrative recommendations. When individual board members plead passionately on behalf of one school versus another, it is hard to separate decision-making based in fact versus that cloaked and personal bias. This leaves the impression of impropriety for the viewers, even when none exists. In closing, I want to thank board members for responding candidly to letters regarding the vote on memo number 106 and for adding agenda item memo number 128 tonight in consideration of our urgent need for a financially sustainable plan for the future. Finally, I would like to reiterate my request that you consider a revote on memo number 106. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ashley Kobolinski and Ms. Walsh, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Hello, I'm Toni Walsh. On behalf of the ROKA Shula community, we stand together, united in our commitment to the success and financial stability of our school. I appreciate the board's considerations in the matter of allocating charter schools into ASD buildings. All of the programs and students are deserving. That is not in question. Many schools within ASD are at a crossroads for different reasons. My children, a current second grader and kindergartner, attend ROKA Shula German Immersion School, and our program is at a financial crossroads that with the board's intervention could prevent us from driving off a financial cliff. Historically, ROKA Shula has moved facilities several times, the fourth time being into our current facility. At one point in the school's history, we had classes housed across a four-lane road from our main facility in a neighboring school because of our lack of space. ROKA Shula staff and students are no strangers to moving or to having a strained relationship with the facility they are housed in. Excuse me. The vote to amend memo 106 has now made it a certainty that ROKA Shula will have to move several times to accommodate our students and maintains that the functions, that they function within facilities that are inadequate. Moving a school has been deemed a disruption to student learning and well-being by the board, and now my young children will be subjected to these disruptions several times throughout their career at ROKA. A move to Lakewood would have been a permanent solution to our facility and financial crisis and would have became the permanent home of our program. As a board, you claim to prioritize space optimization, student enrollment, financial efficiency, and lease timeliness. I beseech you to take these into consideration again, along with what our community presents to you tonight, and make the fiscal and timely decision on what a permanent move would look like for ROKA Shula. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Rob Culbertson, if you'll come down, and Ms. Kobolinski, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ashley Kobolinski. I come to you tonight because I am a confused and frustrated parent of a kindergartner, third grader, and a future student of ROKA Shula. I have been racking my brain the past couple of weeks trying to make sense of a decision that was made, and I just can't make sense of it. To add to my confusion, I know that when you took your positions on this board, you took an oath to be impartial. The big issue at stake is that two schools need a new building, or in one case, a placeholder until they can save enough to build their own building. ROKA Shula's lease ends in August, while ANCCS has time on their side with four more years in their current building. So the urgency for a new building would make ROKA the obvious choice. In addition to that, the right sizing initiative is intended to fill school buildings, correct? ROKA Shula's size would fit the Lakewood building perfectly. It would offer them the lunchroom that they've never had, the library that they've never had, the gym that they've never had, an ASD building that they've never had. How many other buildings are there out there that could house us so well? You want to prioritize ROKA and future building closures, but what is the likelihood that it will be big enough and near service high as you have suggested? Giving the Lakewood building to a school that would not fill the building to capacity and is only using the building as a placeholder until they realize their ultimate goal of building their own building is mind-boggling. When I, while I recognize that both schools are in need of a building, I can only make sense of one school that would make sense in the long term. The school that plans to stay there for the long term, ROKA Shula. You owe it to all students and families in ASD, specifically the ROKA Shula community, to be impartial, to earn back their trust. So with that, I request that you rescind memorandum number 106 and revote with impartiality and without bias. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Rob Culbertson, if you'll state your name for the record, and Amanda Thompson, if you'll come down.
Hi, my name is Rob Culbertson. I am a parent of two students at ROKA Shula. I'm sure you're getting tired of hearing us, but it's clear that we care about this school and about our kids and our community. Listening to the reports on testing today, it's clear from the comments from Board Member Bellamy and Lessons that you care about our students, you want to see them do better. I am sure that everyone on this board is invested in that mission and in our community. At the same time, we know that the Anchorage School District is facing some troubling times right now. I think we're being asked to do more with less, and unfortunately, it looks like that's going to be kind of the long-term situation for a little while. It's going to be a tough year. So what can you do? I think you have to triage. You have to prioritize the area of greatest need first. And in doing that, I would urge you to move a motion for, to reconsider the vote for Lakewood Elementary. And I want to confirm and motivate you to do so because you have ample coverage to do a motion to reconsider on that. And I think with all of these questions about transparency and new information that's come to light since the last school board meeting, that would be a fair process. And you know what? If it doesn't go our way, I can, I can understand that. But we are here and we have consistently been here because we care. Ms. Bellamy, you brought up last time, you wondered why the Alaska Native Cultural Charter School suddenly became so interested in this school at the last moment. And you know, I saw myself how many more students and people from ROKA Shula and community members were here. I happen to know a family who goes to ANCCS and will not be attending should they move to the Lakewood facility. My understanding is that there are several parents that are upset about this. One of the reasons they're upset is because nobody asked them. Nobody asked them if this was a change that they want or would be interested in relocating. I will tell you, ROKA Shula is a school that is, is used to doing more with less with test results in reading and math that are almost double the Anchorage School District standard. And that's done while we're paying 20% of our budget to our current facility, to a private, a private owner. So, you know, if, if we have to relocate, we will continue to do more with less, but we are asking you to reconsider this vote so we don't have to lay off teachers so that we don't have to impact students.
Thank you for your testimony. Denise Worth and Ms. Thompson, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm Amanda Thompson. I'm a mama, fondsai, and ROKA Shula children. So my name's Amanda Thompson, and I am a ROKA parent. I'm also an APC member, but I speak on my own behalf. I didn't think I was gonna have to do an into-the-story, guys, but it's coming. So those children who were needing that new building, needing this new, a new village, they couldn't fight the tempest anymore. Around 11:30 PM at night, they were blown back only to see the spirits leading another group of children into the cottages. It was strange because they already had houses. Had, they had told the whole land that they were gonna build their own new village. With hot tears streaming down their faces, the two children trudged back to their jam-packed little home. They were surprised to see their stepmother was no longer there. She had left the first day of April. The father told them nonetheless that they would need to pack up all their belongings. So they packed up their musical instruments, their piles of books, their art materials, and elaborate science experiments. They had been given no choice but to move. That night had become children moving everywhere. So, back to the situation that my kid's school is in right now. We were thankful that you all approved our charter. Thank you so much for doing that. You saw the excellence in that school and the support that we need. I ask the board now for that same support. Please entertain a motion to rescind the decision about Lakewood to a school, awarded to a school that already has a facility. Even using the word "award" is not making me comfortable. We don't award like a prize, right? This is about us being a community together and helping all of our students succeed. I agree with earlier testimony that the decision on Lakewood does not make any financial sense for charter schools. It does not make sense for district reading goals, right? Supporting all our charter schools gets the results that you want. We saw that in the work session. We can help you get those reading goals. All of us want more funding for the students. We advocate for higher BSA, but we don't want this BSA squandered on things that don't make any financial sense. It hurts the most that the board did not approach us in good faith to brainstorm solutions. We thought we were getting those conversations going, and we were there for you. We were talking with you. We were listening. It just ended, and we were thrown this at the last minute. So I just ask you to please re-vote, to rescind, and to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll touch back. I did call Adam Leggett earlier. I don't know if he showed up a little later. Not seeing anyone. Erin McLaughlin, if you'll come down. And Ms. Worth, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Denise Worth. This is my fourth school board meeting. I'm also here to support ROKA Shula. And I'd like to say that I really appreciate everything that you do. And I see your forte as analyzing how to teach kids, how to make the most of your money, you know, really delving into the data for how to teach kids, how to guide curriculums and get that done. What I see as not your forte is making decisions in a resource-scarce environment. And who would, right? Who gets preparation for that? The one thing I can sort of compare that to is training that I've had in mass casualties. The first decision you make is, is the patient viable? And if they are not, you red-tag the toe and move on. In this case, both schools were viable. And I'm speaking about ROKA Shula and ANCCS. The next question that you ask yourself is, which of the two patients or multiple patients will be most benefited by immediate care? Which one is gasping their last breath? Which one can sit for a minute until you can get the more urgent ones taken care of? In this case, in this analogy, ROKA Shula is the clear answer. So taking a step back, you made, I think, the wrong decision. And you made what I see as a data-free decision. In other words, you relied on emotion or supposition. And if I may, I'd like to just say what I see as the failures in the decision-making. And is it okay if I use members' names for this?
Generally, if you're referring to members' interactions and possible motives, no, we would ask not. But you talk about the issue, but not.
Okay, I'll talk around it. One member tried to get back into, you know, the zone of data by requesting that the APC president of ANCCS give some information about whether or not the parents would move their kids or drive their kids to West Anchorage. And he gave the only answer anyone would ever give in that situation, which was yes. It wasn't data, and don't mistake it for that. So the, ROKA Shula, on the other hand, gave you that data. We would drive our kids there. Another member cited that maybe ROKA Shula would like to be closer to service which they feed into. If we follow that through, are we saying then that ANCCS is gonna feed into West? Is that how you see that happening? I think that you were all surprised by that vote and you made some bad decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Sarah Moyers and Mr. McLaughlin, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Yeah, Erin McLaughlin. Evening, folks. Won't take up much of your time. Just wanna say that I respect the difficult position that the board's been placed in by the folks in Juneau. But when it comes down to it, Anchorage residents are responsible for taking care of Anchorage children. As a parent, community member, I'd like to request memo 106 be reconsidered. The upcoming facility lease, the upcoming facility lease expiration for ROKA creates a real and immediate need. The flat legislative funding combined with decades of cost escalation, escalation have increased and put us all on an unsustainable path in conversations with current and potential parents. The long-term uncertainty is already causing effects on potential and current parents for ROKA children. It's been demonstrated that the board can waive formalities. So if there are any of you having second thoughts, I'd like to strongly request you do the hard thing. Stand up and amend, or at least publicly debate this decision without delay, whether or not there is written outline for procedures to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. William Baxter is next. Ms. Moyers, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Moyers, a parent of two kids at ROKA Shula. Please see our written testimony provided by my family and support of ROKA Shula in requesting a revote on memo 106. We continue to believe the board made the wrong decision as it was not based on facts, but rather on emotion, clear bias, lack of due diligence, and a willful disregard of relevant information. The administration's recommendation to move ROKA Shula to Lakewood was based primarily on enrollment, urgency, and finances. The board claims to prioritize space optimization, student enrollment, financial efficiency, and lease timelines, yet your decision directly contradicts these priorities. If the board is going to utilize different criteria to evaluate placement, as overriding both recommendations from the administration clearly indicates, this should be communicated in advance so as not to waste everyone's time. With this right sizing decision, the board has indicated that growth potential is more important than optimizing space based on enrollment, that a less urgent timeline calls for more urgent action, and that financial efficiency is irrelevant. It has been extremely frustrating listening to one-sided arguments presented by board members without comparing the situation for each program. For each attempt at a substantive point in support of another school, members willfully ignore that those points are at least equally true and even more urgent for ROKA Shula. We are now in the position of asking the board to approve an amendment that places ROKA in the same facility that some board members insisted was unacceptable for another school. A school that has a formal resolution from October of 2024 indicating their desire to stay in that facility on the east side of town. Can you understand why we find this situation perplexing and frustrating? I now have to implore you to support memo 128. As absurd as it is, it may turn out to be the only option ROKA has to remain financially viable while we wait for another option that is more in line with the board's priorities. I hope that right sizing for ROKA does not ultimately mean shrinking our outstanding program to fit in a smaller building because of the board's shortsighted decision-making. ROKA needs and deserves more support from the board. Please do better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Kim Jocken, I'm sorry, I'm not pronouncing that right. Jock, Joshkum, I think. And Mr. Baxter, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
I'm William Baxter. I'm from Anchorage. And FFA kids call me Sticker Bill. And FFA means Future Farmers of America or Future Farmers Association. And I got four H. And I got 4H in my church now, which is another agriculture organization for kids. And I have talked to people that have been in 4H a lot, FFA. There's a lot of people in Anchorage that's been at agriculture degrees. I've talked to, and I go to a lot of country bars and country. I know a lot of country people. And in fact, I'm going to the Alaska Borough, Alaska Borough Meeting, a farmers' borough meeting out in Palmer tomorrow night, and the chapter. And then there's a, then I'm coming back to Anchorage tomorrow night and do an FFA fundraiser at Chilkoo Charlie's. And I'm inspired a lot of this stuff I do. And then I go, and then Thursday night, I go to The Grange, which is another agriculture organization out in Palmer. And that, so I am involved with thought. I know Brian Scorby of the, he's a agriculture director for Alaska. And I know a lot of people. I know the FFA people. I've taken the FFA person, the head, one of the head FFA people of Alaska, hunting last year and got him a big bull. So I know a lot of people in the agriculture industry, and they know me or heard of me because I'm, I get around with my trucks and that. You know, I don't know if you ever see my trucks. They'll fill with agriculture bumper stickers on. And, you know, people have got, are gamblers. I just got a problem with bumper stickers. And I didn't realize how powerful I am, but I'm pretty influential person here in Anchorage now in the state. And thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'm going to let you pronounce your name so that I don't mispronounce it again.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the board, my name is Dr. Kim Jocken. I am part of the Roka community, and I will share some of my family's history with you today. I'm also back. You've seen me before, like many others. We are no stranger to social injustice and generational drama in my family. My grandfather, Kurt Reiman, was born in 1900 and was forced to fight in the First as well as the Second World War. He was a high school art teacher and a loving and kind person. Towards the end of World War II, he was sent to the Russian front, and he ended up being a prisoner of war in Russia for five years. Being an artist, he got guards to provide him with pencils, slivers of paper where possible. This is one of his self-portraits he drew during his time in Russian captivity, using only a broken piece of glass as a mirror. After those five long years, he was only let go because he suffered multiple heart attacks. Following, he was finally able to find and reconnect with his wife, my grandmother, Hildegard Reiman. She had been forced to flee her home in Königsberg, where her family had large land parcels and lived for generations. Following his return, my grandparents built up their life and conceived my mother. My grandfather got to teach again as art teacher. However, he remained a very sick man for the rest of his life, which ended when my mom, at that time 10 years old, found her father on the staircase of her home, who had suffered his final heart attack. Generational drama is very present in my family. Remembering social injustice is so important for our world to become a better place. This was one reason why my son Liam's middle name is Kurt, or Kurt in English, named after my grandfather. He is currently a student at Roka Schule. And now I ask you to not consider anyone's family's history in making your decisions. I ask you to serve all students of the Anchorage School District and consider them as equal. All of them deserve to be respected and supported the same. Through plentiful testimonies of our students, staff, leadership, and parents, you learn about the impressive community that forms the foundation of our school and our need for your support. I am testifying today to ask you for your support for our Roka Shula students in finding a home, ideally a long-term home, within ASD facility so that we can continue to be successful in educating our students. Funding should go towards our students' education and not facility rental costs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. We do have two more speakers, but it's on an action item, so we will take that up when we come to that on our agenda. That concludes public testimony on non-action items. And I'm going to suggest a 10-minute break. And so we will resume at, right at 8 o'clock or a minute or so after. If board members will return to their seats, please. If board members will return to their seats, we will resume the meeting. If board members will return to their seats, please. If Member Lessens will return to her seat, please. We are back in session at 8:05. It brings us to Section E of the agenda. I would entertain a motion. Member Donlin.
I'd move to rescind the board's action at the March 4, 2025 meeting in adopting memorandum number 106, ASD repurposing recommendations as amended.
There is a motion to rescind item 106. This motion is in order whenever there is not another item of business on the floor. It doesn't mean it will be taken up next. It does require a second. Do I have a second?
So, how is this? We're making a motion right before we do the consent agenda?
When the floor is open, but there's not a motion on the floor, a motion to rescind a previously decided item is appropriate. We would still go on and do the consent agenda and our action items, and then take it up as item number four.
Item number four under action?
Correct.
All right, I'll second.
Moved and seconded. It does require a two-thirds vote.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat the motion for clarity?
The motion is to rescind. This might be helpful.
Do we have any board members online?
We do have Member Higgins and Member Wilson are both online. We do have all seven members available. And I'm questioning my own thought about... and I'm, I'm questioning my own thought about whether it comes up next on the agenda or it comes under action items. But this, this is the actual motion to rescind. So it, um, if seconded, we would debate it and vote on whether or not to rescind it.
That is correct. That is my understanding.
Member Lessons.
I just, um, I have a, I believe it's a point of order about motion to rescind according to our cheat sheet here, our chart, our chart of common motions. It looks like it needs a super majority of the board to vote on that with no notice. So by my, we need, we, you would need a vote of five board members to vote to rescind.
Um, my understanding is that with notice, it requires a majority. Without notice, it would take a two-thirds vote.
How do you define notice?
Um, if it had been noticed on the, say, previous agenda, that it would be, that it would be coming up for consideration. So it is without notice. Yeah. Okay. It has been moved and seconded. It is debatable. Anyone wish, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I just believe this is the right thing to do at this point in time. I really believe there's a tremendous, um, amount of data and rational reasons that the board should rescind its action in, with memorandum one oh six and to move forward to considering moving Rooka Shula into Lake Hood and to also continue to support the Alaska Native Charter, um, Cultural School with additional funding to upgrade Abbott Loop. Um, I think that's an option that's available to us. And I think it's the more logical and well thought out course of action for the board. And this motion would allow us to pursue that.
Further discussion. Putting myself in the speaking order, I'll say that I basically agree with what Member Donnelly had to say. A, a lot of it goes to allocation of resources. Uh, this is, uh, moving Alaska Native Cultural Charter School and moving Rooka Shula is the more expensive option. Um, I, I do believe it's unlikely that Alaska Native Cultural Charter plans to build a building. I, I know they aspire to that, but, uh, and I'm sure everyone from Rooka Shula knows that that is a dramatic and difficult step to make. Um, sizing matters. Um, I, I just look at it as a more efficient allocation of resources within the district. Member Bellamy.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Um, it, it is all of that, what you say, and it's all what Miss Member Donnelly says. But for me, if, there's another piece. I think when we asked the administration for a recommendation, I mean, I, I trust that they have looked, um, at all the possibilities. Every once in a while, something may have gotten overlooked. But I do think, I just think that the recommendation, uh, and when I reflect back, we probably should have separated both the STEAM, uh, Highland discussion from the other discussion. Uh, but we didn't do that, um, which, which really ended up with both being on the same, uh, in the same memo. I supported the one thing. I didn't support the other. Uh, so in retrospect, if we had separated the two, um, and I think somebody did call for bifurcation. I can't remember. Oh, was that you also, Member Donnelly? Um, but at the same time, I wasn't in the room at that time. But I do, I, I do trust that the administration got that part of the memo correct. Um, and I hate that we are, we are pitting, um, schools against schools. And, and we, and I don't know what to do about that, but, um, and it may not pass tonight, but, uh, I do think at least one more try, one more discussion. Um, I mean, we're putting, Rookie has the numbers. I mean, it's got the, I mean, we're putting four hundred and eighty-five kids into, and that was important to me, to get a space big enough to put them in, uh, knowing that we had more time, mo- knowing that we had more time for, uh, to, to help out, uh, the Alaska Native Charter School. I dearly love that program too. I have no grandkids in it, uh, but all our, all of our kids are important. And I don't wanna, I, I, I just think we, 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 we could get it right, is all. At least try one more time. Thank you.
Other discussion. Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I join other board members in, um, agreeing we need to support all four programs that run ASD memorandum number one oh six. Um, I think we can and will continue to do that, starting with tonight with ASD memorandum number one to eight. And that process continues through a rightsizing conversation the board's committed to this fall. Um, I do not see, um, reversing course as being beneficial to, um, all four programs at this time. Um, I recognize that we need to, um, be more strategic as to how we engage in a rightsizing conversation this fall and, uh, consider linking the decision to consolidate buildings with the opportunity to support charter programs. And so I'm looking forward to a, a more intentional and, um, more strategic rightsizing conversation, um, this fall. And, and so I won't be supporting this motion, but certainly understand why all the programs that were, um, referenced during the ASD memorandum number one oh six conversation are worthy of support. Thank you.
Member Wilson. Member Wilson, you're still showing as muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Um, I, I also agree with what Member Jacobs said in that all of our programs are, are absolutely valued. All of our kids are absolutely valued. Um, I will not be supporting this motion this evening either. I, I do believe that, um, we, that, that my vote was in support of, um, the program that, that I felt should be moved into a more, uh, long-term, sustainable school, um, because that, that program has, has gone through so many changes. Um, I, I do, it, it is really difficult though. We are, I, I feel like we're, we've got programs that are fighting over which school and, and we should not be in this place. And it, it's very frustrating that, that we are. But, um, that being said, I, I will not support this amendment this evening.
Any further discussion? Member Higgins.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I'm not going to be supporting this, but let me say that this is, this is still, um, the most frustrating situation I can have. We've got all these charter schools and kids were not in safe facilities and the like. Uh, most charter schools need our support. And I appreciate the motion that, um, President Holloman is putting forth for this meeting, uh, because we can't leave anybody behind. It's just, it was a difficult decision and I, I really think we need to move on. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm hearing a really loud rumbling that bothers me, but I think it's just a large truck. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to rescind number one oh six? Seeing no hands, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative Pack?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? Member Higgins?
No.
Member Jacobs?
No.
Member Wilson?
No.
Member Lessons?
No.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. And by a vote of four to three, the motion fails. That puts us back to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Chair, if there's no board member wishing to pull an item from the consent agenda, I move to approve the consent agendas listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative Pack?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Bellamy? That's okay, Member Bellamy. Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes.
That brings us to, I'm, I'm sorry, that, uh, by a seven oh vote, we have approved the consent agenda. That brings us to action items. Uh, the first item is a, a vote on a student hearing that we were briefed about in executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the reinstatement from expulsion of a student associated with ASD incident number one, three, five, two, nine, four, seven, as discussed in executive session.
A second.
Yep. Moved and seconded. Uh, we'll ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Member Bellamy?
Yes, sorry.
Member? Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donnelly?
Yes.
Member Wilson, I know you were not present in the executive session. President Holloman?
Yes.
By a vote of six to oh, we have approved, um, the student reinstatement. Would entertain a motion on ASD memorandum one twenty. We do, although we should move it first, I believe. Second.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve ASD memorandum number one two zero, naming of the Willowcrest Gymnasium to the Leroy C. Jones Gymnasium. Uh, the recommended actions to approve the request of Willowcrest Elementary School staff and community to formally name the Willowcrest Gymnasium to the Leroy C. Jones Gymnasium.
A second.
Is moved and seconded, and we do have two speakers to be heard. Mr. Raymond Marshall and Mr. Walker Weaver. You would come forward? After you've thought it out, you feel, state your name. For the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ray Marshall, and I'm honored to be the principal of Willowcrest Elementary School. Before I start, I would like to introduce you to Leroy Jones for the people who maybe don't know him. And just for a second, I would like, if you know Leroy Jones, would you please stand so we can see you? Thank you. The reason I asked for that quick survey is I'm about to tell you a story that's gonna be hard to believe. And I don't know, I don't know if Mr., let me read this for a second. At the end of the day, I can say when I first heard stories about Mr. Jones, I found it hard to believe. And so I want people that are out here that maybe don't know Mr. Jones to know who else they can ask. And that's why I ask people to identify themselves. I first heard about Mr. Jones from Principal Christina Peterson. I worked with Mrs. Peterson at Rabbit Creek. Mrs. Peterson always spoke very, very highly of Willowcrest Elementary School. When she found out I'd been selected to be the principal at Willowcrest, she congratulated me and told me about fant- the fantastic staff, and then went on to tell me about an outstanding PE teacher named Mr. Jones, and how he had positively impacted every student who came through the gym, and that every year, former students paraded through the school to see him and seek his wisdom for their future life decisions. She went on and on with many examples. And by the end of this introduction, I was a bit skeptical. And that's why I want people to be able to identify folks out there. No one could really be that good, I felt. After I met Mr. Jones and worked with him, I found that she'd been reserved with her praise. In the two years I was fortunate enough to work with Mr. Jones, he had countless former students come and say hi and seek life advice. One example was a girl who came to meet him in our staff lounge. She told me, I need to talk to someone I can trust. Mr. Jones invited me into the conversation. Apparently, she was strongly considering dropping out of high school and wanted his advice. At school athletic events and family nights, he looked like a rock star surrounded by fans. I'm telling you this because I'm going to read you a letter that the Willowcrest staff submitted to the board requesting the renaming of our gym after Miss Jo- Mr. Jones. And I want you to know that we too have been humble in our praise of him. I would like to propose renaming the Willowcrest Gymnasium to the Leroy C. Jones Gymnasium. I make this recommendation based on the large upwell of community support to pay tribute to a distinguished veteran teacher. Over the course of thirty-two years as a physical education teacher, Mr. Jones contributed to the development of numerous athletic opportunities for all Anchorage school students. In addition to-
Um, if we could extend the time for just a minute or two.
Give it my time.
I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how to turn the microphone back on.
Oh.
You wanna use mine? All right, there we go.
It's back. In addition to his passion for athletics and physical education, Mr. Jones played a significant role mentoring students at all grade levels, guided them in their life and career choices, and counseled them toward achieving school and lifelong success. Mr. Jones actively coached in the district at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Early in Mr. Jones's career, he came to believe that great athletes begin in the elementary level. To this end, he worked to expand the elementary school basketball program from a couple of games to an intramural league that had the, uh, to an intramural league that has a beginning and advanced level and culminates with a district-wide tournament. From the beginning of this endeavor, Mr. Jones was passionate that each team must be comprised of both boys and girls, and both genders had to be equally represented on the court. Over the course of his lengthy career ASD, Mr. Jones officially mentored countless PE teachers. He also had a profound influence on all teachers and administrators who were fortunate enough to work with him. In honor of these accomplishments, he was spotlighted as a superhero teacher by the Alaska Department of Education. In addition to the above accolades, it is my belief that Mr. Jones's greatest contribution is one that is unseen but has been institutionally transformative. Mr. Jones has been a leader in maintaining a culture of respect. He accomplished this not by outwardly demanding anything of others, but rather by modeling that shining example of how to treat other people, all people, children included. He is that rare individual that makes everyone want to do their best. It is his actions, his words, his tone, and his eyes. Mr. Leroy C. Jones has set the bar we all strive, strive to meet. Willowcrest Elementary School was Mr. Jones's home for the majority of his educational career, and we continue to work, work to meet the example he has set for us. It is in this spirit that we cordially request our gymnasium be named in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Weaver.
Yes, my name is Walter James Weaver, Jr. I'm a retired school teacher from the Anchorage School District and a student KK through twelve here. Yeah, I did KK twice. Um, the reason why I'm wanting to speak on Mr. Jones is the things that he does outside of the gym that no one hears about. the reason why I'm wanting to speak on Mr. Jones is the things that he does outside of the gym that no one hears about. He does at-school program for butt-kicking pass. Um, he goes to tons of their basketball games later on and football games. He's a diehard at West and never went to school there. And he got ahold of me one day because I also worked for a major airlines here in town. He had a girl who just won the punt pass and, and kick contest, and her parents couldn't afford it to send her to Seattle. So he called me up and started his little thing with the talking, and then I saw him later on as a part of our fraternity meeting, and he gave me those eyes. And I said, what? He goes, I really need this girl to go down there. And I said, oh, man, come on, Leroy. No, I really need her to go. Off she goes. And those are the little things Leroy does out of the school district for these kids beyond what you just heard. And that's why naming this gym after him, he has many kids running up to him, and parents now that, uh, want him to talk to, to get knowledge. And naming this gym after him would be a great honor since he was the first person there when they started digging the dirt for that gym. So he needs it. He wants it. His friends and the kids want it more than he does. And then he got put on New York's Times Square, which he doesn't, I want to talk about, for being a great teacher, but a great friend to a whole building and people outside of that building. So, thank you. Uh, you've got a good choice here, and this is a great one to put in a new gym, uh, his name after. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Discussion by the board. Anyone wish to try to top that? Member Donley?
So, in nineteen sixty, uh, they built Willowcrest, and I was fortunate enough to go to first grade there. And I went all six grades at Willowcrest, and at that time, there was no gymnasium. There was no cafeteria. There was no multipurpose room. We, we had hot meals served in the hallways and we ate in the classrooms. So I was a little crushed when they built the gym the year after I left. But fast forward fifty-something plus years as a parent at Northern Lights ABC, I was trying to get a basketball team together there, and the people said, you know, there's a guy over at Willowcrest you need to talk to. And he was so wonderful talking to me as a parent that he didn't know, and really gave me great guidance. And then, of course, we got COVID right after that, so everything kind of fell apart. But I wanted, I was very grateful for his guidance at that time, so thank you again.
Thank you. Member Bellamy?
I just want to say how nice it is to see, to see your tribe all around you. Um, you have been, I mean, I think both my kids have, you've touched both my kids' lives, and we never went to Willowcrest, so it had to be somewhere else in, in the community. Um, but it's nice to see that you are leaving such a legacy and uh, that you have people who are here and in support of it. And, uh, did I recruit you or did somebody else recruit you to ASD? I'm just trying to remember now. That's all I'm saying, but good choice. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Well, when we vote.
Member Wilson?
I, I appreciate the opportunity to speak because, uh, Mr. Leroy Jones is amazing. He has ran, he ran an elementary basketball tournament for students from all of our elementary schools that chose to participate, and that has grown tremendously throughout the years. So this is an opportunity for students who may not, uh, and apologize, there's some noise behind me, but who, who may not ever have the opportunity to participate in a team sport um, after elementary, and for him to put all of that time, effort, his money out of his own pocket for many, many years for that to happen for kids all over our district, that is just the start of, of the legacy that he's leaving behind and all the work he's done to make a difference in, in so many of our students. And so I, I, I appreciate the opportunity to say thank you for all of your work all of these years, and it is my honor to be able to vote in support of this amendment.
Any other discussion? Member Jacobs?
Yeah, no, I won't attempt to, uh, add too much or top what's been said. I just wanted to thank, um, administration and the group for bringing this forward, and I'm, I am grateful that Mr. Jones could be here with us tonight. And I'm always grateful to acknowledge those who, um, have done so much for our students, so I appreciate it.
Oh, and then, um, I retired from ASD after twenty years. I did spend four years as AA president, and unsurprisingly, we spent some time awarding each other. Um, and you, you meet people that you didn't hear of, even though you feel like you know a lot of people in the district that have simply put in the time very quietly, meant the world to a large number of students, not in any way that brought them fame or fortune or anything like that. But they're scattered around amongst us, and I'm very honored to hear your story tonight, see the people that have come to support you, and it is a great honor to be in a position to vote yes on this resolution. If there's no other discussion, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative Pack?
Yeah, enthusiastic, yes.
Member Wilson?
Also an enthusiastic yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
I'll have to vote yes, yes.
Member Donley?
A grateful yes.
Member Bellamy? President Holloman?
Yes, with the note that it is unanimous. By seven zero, we have voted to name the Willowcrest Gymnasium after Mr. Leroy Jones. Thank you very much. That brings us to ASD memorandum number one twenty-eight.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve ASD memorandum number one twenty-eight relocation, relocation of Roka Shul German Immersion School. Recommended action is that the Anchorage School Board approves and authorizes the superintendent to relocate Roka Shul German Immersion School from its current location at eighteen forty-sixty sixty-fourth Avenue, Anchorage, Alaska nine-nine-five-oh-seven to eighty-four twenty-seven Lake Otis Parkway, Anchorage, Alaska nine-nine-five-oh-seven. Should that request be made from their academic policy committee, this approval extends through the expiration of the five-year waiver granted by the Anchorage Fire Marshal as outlined in ASD memorandum number one-three-two, which was unanimously approved by the board on April eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded discussion. Now, I will weed off on this, and I ask this to be placed on the agenda. Um, it does not actually move Roka Shul to this location, but it does make it available to them if their APC decides that is in their best interest. Um, we do want to offer the support we can, uh, given where we're at. Um, my understanding is that they have walked the school and that it is usable, and, uh, I know you're still in negotiations with your current landlord. So, and we stand ready to, to offer this at least as an alternative. Any other discussion? This lessons, member lessons?
Thank you. I think I'm losing my voice as we speak tonight. Um, I wanted to speak to, or I guess ask for the administration to, to speak to the building's safety. I know we've spoken about the Abbott Loop facility a number of times. I reread the Fire Marshal's, um, uh, five-year wa- waiver, if that's the right word, uh, which I fully understand goes until the end of the twenty-eight, twenty-nine school year. Although the current contract with Alaska Native Cultural Charter School goes through the end of the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. But my question is really about the building's fundamental safety. And I think I have a firm grasp that it is a safe building, but if the administration could please, um, maybe underscore wh- what makes it a safe building for students to use right now, tomorrow, a year from now?
Sure, I can cover that. Um, so Abbott Loop has an enhanced fire detection system that was put in many years ago, um, which is better than most schools, but most schools do have fire suppression systems. Um, the building is safe for operation. Um, it's safe at school. Um, the risk is not with people's lives if there's a fire because it'll detect it very quickly with even the minimal amount of smoke or heat. Um, the risk is to the structure itself. So naturally, we don't have people sleeping there all night. It wouldn't be a, a good location for something like that, but the facility is safe. Um, it's, it has been safe the whole time. I know there have been people who have used words like unsafe publicly, and it's caused anguish, consternation, and confusion. But I, I, I think we've been briefing for several years now that the building has always been safe. It's still safe, and it can operate um, during the day.
Thank you very much.
And Member Bellamy?
I have a question also for, so Rookie has four hundred, almost five hundred kids. Uh, what is the capa- capacity for? Oh, not you. Sorry.
I'll take that. So the deed capacity for that building, or actually ours when we look at the classrooms, initially would be about three hundred and thirty-two to three hundred and fifty. Um, we spent the bulk of spring break at Abbott Loop um, uh, multiple times throughout the week. Uh, and we, we worked through to where we can get twenty-three classrooms. So some of the spaces being used are not used as classrooms by ANCCS because they're, they're much smaller. They didn't need to. Um, but we walked through with the principals on Sunday, uh, multiple APC members, um, the whole staff, transportation, maintenance, capital plans. Everybody has been in that building this past week, and we can find space. It is not an optimal location for long-term use for a school that big. Um, but it certainly can operate um, for the next, uh, uh, however long it takes to find them a, a more suitable location. It wasn't built for five hundred, but can we get five hundred kids in there? Yes. Um, it's going to be tight, but frankly, if you talk to, uh, Brandon, they're tight where they're at now, and they're used to tight. And they're used to having to find efficiencies under every stairwell and corner. Um, and, and we have a plan to be able to move them in if the APC chooses that option um, as negotiations are, are continuing. And, and it can work, but ultimately we need to find them one of the nineties relos type size buildings. Um, because it's, you, they're certainly not probably going to look at adding pre-K, which, um, you know, they would like to do, but, but that space is not there.
So how many relos would they need?
Well, we can't use relos. That, that complicated it. There's no parking for them to do family nights or meetings or anything else because it was built to be a small school. So we're going to take the pad in the back that we would have put relos on and use it for additional parking. We may have to do um, an extension depending on the vote tonight, I'm sure. Um, I will spend more time at Abbott Loop with, with our team as we come up with the best way. Um, for those of you who have been to that school, it was, it was built to be a small school. It's on a small acre plot. Um, you know, it wasn't meant to be a permanent home to that large of a facility, but um, both principals, there are other options for um, movement of privately owned vehicles. There is going to be potentially a requirement for transportation. We have to work out how big. Um, if you drive by where Alaska Native in the morning and the afternoon, um, come in and release, it's, it's, it's a problematic traffic school on Lake Otis. Um, but can we make it work for a period of time? Yes. Um, but we've got to finish the staff efforts and work some more details. Um, and, and naturally, if, if the APC wants it, um, we, we will make that school work.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as part of the continued work associated with ASD's rightsizing effort to align ASD memorandum number one twenty-eight with passed action by this board regarding future building consolidation and consolidation and repurposing proposals, I would move to amend the recommendation section of ASD memorandum number one-two-eight to include the following language. Quote, "This adoption of ASD memorandum number one-two-eight does not satisfy the priority status given to Roka Shul German Immersion School and ASD memorandum number one-oh-six related to buildings which may become available via future board-approved rightsizing proposals."
Second.
Your amendments moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, this just makes clear that, um, this action by the board wouldn't, um, fulfill what the board did on um, three, four, related to giving both Roka Shul German Immersion School as well as Highland Academy um, priority status as we work through, uh, future rightsizing proposals, which the board voted on twelve-seventeen to continue this fall. Um, that language, I think, just makes it explicit, although I think it was always intended. Thank you. Would urge a, a yes vote.
Any discussion on the amendment?
Just a question, that language would go to the very end of the recommendation section. Is that right?
I would agree that it would be best placed at the end of the recommendation. That's been our past practice.
Seeing no hands, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll. We are voting on Member Jacobs amendment, oh, Member Lessons.
Um, I just wanted to, I'm struggling to speak right now, but, um, I appreciate the amendment. I appreciate that it really clarifies the, um, the work that has yet, that the work that still needs to happen, that this does not suffice uh, to fulfill that, the intent of amendment number three, uh, previously adopted. So I appreciate the clarification, and I will be supporting it.
Any further discussion? Seeing no hands, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to call the roll.
Student Representative Pack? Member Bellamy? Can you state that again on?
Yes.
Sorry. Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
President Holloman?
Yes. We have adopted the amendment. We are back on the main motion as amended. If there is any further discussion. I, I will add in that, um, originally, when Abbott Loop Neighborhood School was closed, our intention was to, to close that building and cede it back to the municipality, uh, partly because, uh, it does have the fire suppression issue, and at the time, that looked to be an extremely expensive thing to fix, uh, as well as needing other kinds of remodeling and whatnot. So, uh, it was after that that we realized it could be a temporary home for Alaska Native Cultural, and, and we sort of changed course, and to some degree, I, I think that's been part of the difficulty for the board in, in dealing with it. We, we meant to close that building and be done with it, partly as a way of saving money. But then, when the rightsizing activity started later, um, that's when we realized we, we had charter schools that really did want to relocate. And, and I'll admit, we don't exactly have a conventional way of dealing with that. Um, the only part of it that feels a little bit natural is we have greater need than we have resources. And that is seemingly what being on the board is about these days, unfortunately. So I, I wish we could do better by all of our schools. Um, we're sort of taking it piecemeal, and it's, it's not always a smooth path forward. Um, so the, the ultimate resolution, uh, we've, we've got a lot of people in the legislature and in the general public in Anchorage that want us to get rid of some buildings and be a smaller district because we do have fewer students. Uh, and we're trying to balance that with providing good facilities for all of our students, and that includes all of our charter schools. So that, that's a little bit of a conundrum that we're facing in trying to decide what to do uh, going forward, but, um, if this can help Rokashula, we are happy to see that happen. And it, it does not preclude that we could change course again and make the building available for the long term. Uh, if it's something that the voters support because it would take a bond issue. There is a partial bond to do some work on the school, but I don't think it's enough at this point to fully bring it up to code. It would take some additional monies as well. But that will be something, um, for the future to decide. That completes our action items and brings us to the non-action. Oh, I'm sorry. I guess we, we should, we should do that. Why don't you call the roll for the main motion as amended? Thank you.
Student Representative Pack? Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Higgins?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Bellamy?
Yes.
Thank you. President Hallman?
Yes. That completes the action items and brings us to the non-action items. Are there any items members wish to pull for discussion? Seeing no hands, seeing no one online, um, that completes the non-action items. We do not have anyone else, um, for public comment. That brings us to our superintendent update.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, my only update today is on, uh, the topic of emergency preparedness. I do want to recognize that the potential eruption of Mount Spur is on our community's minds, but please do know that our senior leadership has been, uh, collaborating with, um, agencies, including Jay Bear, who spoke about that earlier today to ensure that we're prepared, uh, when that event occurs, uh, as it seems very likely. So the district actually maintains, uh, an emergency operations plan, uh, so that we're ready and prepared for a number of different types of emergencies, um, including volcanic activity. Uh, and this Friday, we plan to launch a family-centered landing page that'll be geared towards what do families and students need to know? Um, so that they can be prepared for the likely event that the, the volcano explodes or erupts, but rather, um, it's my first volcano explosion too. I call. And I'm sure I just, it is for many people. Um, so in any case, I know that there are a lot of questions as to what to bind, what to do, and we want to make sure that families know the, the concrete action. So please, uh, uh, be tracking an email from Team ASD on Friday as well as the landing page. We appreciate your patience. Uh, our focus is on student safety and of course, um, we won't fully understand the magnitude of the situation until the event occurs because part of it depends on where the wind's blowing and that sort of thing. I've learned a lot about volcanoes as a person from Texas. Wow, very interesting information. Um, but with that said, um, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. School board comments. So, oh, member Lessons.
I, I have a question. I mean, and I, I thank you for giving us a heads up that we will be getting more information about how to handle a potential volcanic, uh, eruption. Um, it does call to mind, I mean, I have a lot of questions about what will happen, what, what would happen. One of the things that I'm thinking about is infrastructure and, you know, the HVAC systems. I feel like that's something that I'm hearing about. But I also recall that one of the ways that the district used COVID funds was to invest in the dis-ego ventilation system and that makes me, maybe gives me some confidence that you can shut furnaces down at the drop of a hat. Maybe I'm getting into the weeds, but this is sort of a question that's top of my mind as I'm thinking about my own family home and like, oh, I would want to prevent damage to the furnace.
So actually the first thing we would do is all of our buildings except for ten, we can remotely close all external vents so it doesn't draw any external air inside. So it can, there will be some ash coming through doors as people open them. Um, all the windows will be closed, um, sensitive electronics will be turned off. We've been working this internally for several weeks now. Um, so we've got a good plan. We've got two hundred and fifty thousand masks. Um, that will start being distributed shortly after I send an email to all the principals tomorrow. Um, letting them know that, um, we're pretty good. The last piece we have is some inbound goggles because it can get in your eyes. So anyone who's going to be working and removing ash or anything like that, we've got to have those at every school and of course at the maintenance department. Um, home, home furnace air filters. I bought an entire case from Amazon about three weeks ago. I would certainly recommend that. Um, but it's really that external vent piece that you have to close off quickly. The, the dis-ego isn't really gonna, the VAV isn't, it's, it's not meant for volcanic ash. But we also have ordered, um, two or three sets of filters per school plus two or three sets for every single vehicle to include the bus fleet. So we're, we're as ready as anyone could be for Mount Spur to erupt or explode, whichever, whichever it does.
All right. Well, I appreciate that brief overview and I will, uh, look for that landing page on Friday and direct people there.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it safe to assume that the landing page, once it's created, is going to be promoted on social media for folks to want to see it there?
Yes. MJ, would you like to clarify?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to board comments. I'll start to my right with member Bellamy.
Sure. I have a, I'm actually going to be doing a little announcement for member Wilson. She's got some interference on her side. Uh, so over spring break, our Equity and Community Engagement Department Title One Transportation and, uh, Nutri- Student Nutri- Nutrition Teams collaborated to hold our, uh, Springing Into Summer Resource Fair at Clark Middle School. The fair focused on summer school and camp information for families and provided a free meal. Uh, we also had two buses that delivered meals and resources to families at multiple stops around town. Uh, this event serviced over two hundred and fifty families. So I just, that, those, that's the extent of my comments for tonight. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Member Lessons?
Um, I just wanted to extend, um, my gratitude to members of the audience here who are primarily in the Rokashula community. I want, I'm looking at you, um, I respect you and your work and your school enormously. And I understand the pain and anguish that you're feeling. But I'm looking forward to championing, championing you in your search for the right home for the long run in the right place. And, um, I just thank you for sharing your very real thoughts with the board and the planning that, um, that I know that you can engage in for a long time.
And member Wilson has no additional comments. Um, student rep?
Um, Josh did have to go, but I will say just being up here and attending the first school we're meeting, shadowing him, it's been really awesome seeing how different communities have come out to spoke about their own schools and their own issues. And it's really awesome to see how the community comes out with different versions of their pride and the way that they show themselves out to the members up here on the board. And I do share a lot of sympathy for the different situations that I have seen this meeting and it's been a really great and meaningful conversation to hear both sides of the story. And thank you for having me here.
Member Donley?
So before we go through the next series of downsizing, um, there's something I'm, I'm hoping the administration will have the opportunity to work on. I, I know they're really challenged with the budget situation. But for many, many years, the only charter school we had housed in an ASD building was Aquarian. And so we had allowed Aquarian, my understanding, to do their own maintenance. That, you know, if they needed remodeling and things, they were doing it on their own. Um, as all the other charter schools were doing with whatever buildings they had supplied themselves. Um, we made a decision to ask the voters if they wanted to do a, a major remodel at Aquarian a few years back and the voters approved that. And that's the only frame of reference we have for dealing with charter schools moving into ASD facilities. I don't know of any policy the board's ever adopted, any guidelines for how we would deal with maintenance issues once they get in there or other issues related to that. And I think it'd be really a wise thing to, for the board to have the opportunity to examine what kind of written policy we should have about that going forward since we've got new charter schools moving into ASD facilities. And I know the administration's just really got their hands full dealing with the budget situation right now. But it would really be helpful to have some sort of policies in place when we look at the next round of possible rightsizing issues.
Member Jacobs? No additional comments, thank you. Member Higgins?
I, I actually will be short. I, I also appreciate the comments that, um, uh, all the speakers made and I realize it's emotional issues and we've got to do better, um, for the charter schools and I think we will. I think when it comes to, uh, rightsizing, we need to not, we need to be thinking in rightsizing, not downsizing. Uh, we've got a lot of issues out there. How can we better utilize the space in all the schools? What can we do to, uh, help the community? We talk about preschool, uh, issues. We've got a, a critical workplace issue. The community, if we can support them, uh, and we have space for it, what are we doing and how can we do it better? I know that, um, uh, Mr. Anderson made reference to that in, in, in the past, and I think he's right on that. So before we jump into lectures pick schools, let's talk about why. And in the medical community, there's a P A S T E, one, identify the problem, A, analyze the option, then select the course of action. Uh, we're jumping into the selection of course and actions before we talk about the other steps. And if we can do that, I think we'll make this a little bit better selections uh, on what schools should be impacted and how we can address it and why we're doing it rather than just doing it for political purposes. Uh, yes, we've got less students. Yes, we have classrooms that are in some cases twice as big as what they should be. Uh, with the Pi Consolom study and other studies where we've got so many kids in each classroom that you should have two classrooms rather than one. And yes, we have problems hiring the teachers even if we can. But I just, I just hope we get into a discussion before we get into an argument about the selection. I think we're going to all benefit a lot if we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, to touch on what member Donley mentioned, um, yeah, when we chose to bond to Tex Aquarian, that was precedent setting. Um, of course, part of the issue was because they were in an ASD building, they, they couldn't do the work. It had to be done by ASD. Um, but that was the issue of going to voters and asking them to approve a bond in order to repair a building being used by a charter school. And, and I can look a little bit into the future and say if Anchorage begins to reverse the decline in student population, while we still have a couple of charter schools that are unhoused, potentially we could be faced with asking the voters to build a building for a charter school. Um, because ultimately if several are housed in our buildings, but one or two are not, that presents a little bit of a conundrum. You know, it does happen as Rooki's well aware, when you want to start up a charter school, part of the agreement is you have to go find a place to be. It's not provided. Um, and the fact that you've done that and survived for so long and grown and thrived is a real testimony to, to how worthwhile the program is. And, um, that's pretty much the case with our charter. So you all have found a niche and, um, the, I, I think when the idea was broached, it was, no one ever really sat and thought, well, what do we do if these succeed down the road? Um, floating a bond is a big deal, uh, especially with all the buildings we have that are in need of repair. So, it's something I, I won't be on the board when that happens and I'm kind of happy about that. I'm also going to say that during the twenty eighteen earthquake, I had a friend that managed commercial properties that got really frustrated and irate with the Anchorage School District because they discovered that every ceiling tile in Anchorage had been bought by the Anchorage School District. And I told him how bad I felt about that, but it actually made me kind of proud. I assume you've done that with air filters for ventilation systems as well. Cool. Um, you know, we will be ready for it and deal with it when it happens and, uh, and I, I think we'll all get through that as it comes. Um, past that, I will be in Eagle River tomorrow night for the Eagle River Chamber recognition of, uh, teachers. And it, uh, is an event I've been at before. And Eagle River's a little bit insular and they can have a lot of things to say about the Anchorage School District. But on that particular night, they give awards to the educators out there they consider outstanding and they've got a number of them. Um, so I'm kind of looking forward to being there again for that. It's a really fine evening with everybody. And, uh, with that, I have nothing further to add if there's a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn. Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.